Good afternoon, everyone. I am Carol Kuyer, Executive Director of the Delaware River Basin Commission, and will function as the Hearing Officer for today's two public hearings this afternoon and this evening. And I really thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule for this afternoon to participate in our natural gas rulemaking public hearing process because we want to hear your concerns. This is one of six hearing sessions that will be conducted in three locations. Today, in addition to the two sessions here, we are having two sessions over in Sullivan County, New York. Two more public hearing sessions will take place on Thursday in Centon at the War Memorial Building. All sessions will employ the same procedures and will collectively allow for 18 hours of oral testimony. As you know, DRBC put out a press release on December 9th concerning a public notice of availability of draft natural gas development regulations, and this is also on our website. The notice initiated a 97-day public comment period provided for public hearings at three locations to accept oral testimony and establish formal proceedings for filing written comments to be accepted through March 16th. It is important to note that written comments filed electronically via the National Park Service Planning, Environment, and Public Comment, what's known as PEPSY, system, are directed to DRBC and will be reviewed by DRBC staff and commissioners to facilitate the commissioners' response to comments, including changes to the rules appropriate. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood this, that it is DRBC, not the Park Service, that is receiving the comments. I think there was some confusion that they were going through the Park Service. They were nice enough to provide us the tool to use which really facilitates the process. We thank them for that. And just for interest, we've received about 1,200 electronic comments and about 400 written comments to date. A second document was distributed to the registration table focused on rules and guidelines for the conduct of today's hearing. I would like to reiterate just a few of them to ensure that we have civil and orderly proceeding. I have no doubt. Commenters may speak once during a single hearing session. Comments will be recorded by a court reporter, and please speak clearly to help facilitate the job. Please begin by stating your name, your place of residence, and if you wish, your affiliation. Commenters will have two minutes each. Time will be strictly observed by me and Stojkowiczinski, who are in the booth. Commenters will be alerted when the time begins, when they have 10 seconds, and when the time ends. Once a commenter's time has ended, the commenter must stop speaking and leave the microphone area. Lastly, I implore you to please remain quiet during the testimonies so the court reporter can't produce an accurate record. These rules are intended to help sustain the flow of the hearing, to allow as many people as possible to be heard, and to ensure that an accurate record of all comments are obtained. We appreciate everyone's cooperation and thank you for your participation in the rulemaking process. I also want to acknowledge that the commissioners received numerous requests, no doubt including requests from participants in today's hearing session, asking us to extend the comment period and hold more public hearings. Let's be aware that the commissioners are considering these requests, and there will be an announcement made during our March 2nd commission meeting next Wednesday. I do note that with your cooperation, we hope to hear from at least 150 people during the six hours of testimony here. So, let's get started, and here's how it's going to work. We've handed out about 100 numbers. We anticipate getting through 75, and we've added those extras just in case we can get a few more. I'll call 10 numbers at a time, and those 10 people, please come forward. Which four will assist you and will get you in these front rows here so we're all ready and take as little time as possible? We will start with the public officials who have pre-registered, and I think they're already in their places here.
My name is George Floor, Chairman of the Shawla Township Board of Supervisors. First, I would like to thank the Delaware River Basin Commission for holding this hearing and giving the public the right to express their opinions on the proposed gas drilling regulations concerning the Delaware River. I have been an advocate of private property rights and firmly believe if you wish to restrict a private property owner's rights, they should be compensated in some way. The issue before the Commission at this time is how much regulation should be implemented in the Delaware River Basin. I believe the current proposals are inadequate to protect the river, which in a sense we all own. The Delaware provides drinking water for 20 million people and provides recreation and economic opportunities for those who live in the corridor. It is my belief that there should not be gas drilling within the river corridor itself. The proposed 500-foot setback is far too small. The river herself moves 500 feet during a flood. A chemical spill could easily seep 500 feet poisoning the river. Fracking that close to the river can have unforeseen effects. To have regulations that allow gas drilling so close to an unpredictable natural force is unwise. Common sense dictates that no matter how many safeguards you put in, someone will eventually make a mistake, and with the river's safety, there will be no second chance. I urge Commission members to reevaluate their position and spend more time on the river to learn what is at stake. The river can be both angry and majestic, but in early October, as dawn breaks and the Delaware shimmers in autumn glory, she'll steal your heart, and you'll realize the river is a priceless gift and a part of your soul. The benefits of drilling in the river corridor are far outweighed by what we could lose, so please reconsider. Thank you.
My name is Brian Smith. I'm Chairman of the Wayne County Commissioners. After going through these regulations and attending your bullet point presentations in Trenton, New Jersey, I've categorized my comments into two parts. First, water withdrawal. Your approvals on water withdrawal, Section 7.4, should be timely, well-defined timelines, and some accountability on your part to stick to those timelines. Also, in your approvals for water withdrawal, there should be incentives and bonuses offered to industry for taking water during high-water events such as heavy rain and snowmelt. Communication technology is so advanced that industry could be notified almost instantly when a water exceeds a predetermined level of a high-water event. The second part of my comments is on water quality. The Department of Environmental Protection has already designated Wayne County as a special protection watershed. This designation means we already have very strict regulations on water quality through erosion and sediment control, setbacks, buffers, and anti-degradation rules. We do not need, especially in these difficult economic times, another layer of regulatory authority. I am certain that allowing the DRBC oversight of one industry will open the door and give the DRBC a foothold to require oversight on all industry, construction, and eventually even residential housing. This will make it even more difficult in the future to embrace opportunity for job creation, economic development, and to keep our young people employed locally. I firmly believe that water quality should remain under the oversight of the DEP, and even then, we need to strike a balance between sensible regulations and healthy economic development as it pertains to any industry. Thank you.
Thank you.[497.13][497.13](APPLAUSE).
I'm Wayne County Commissioner Anthony Herzog. The proposed DRBC natural gas drilling regulations are an unnecessary duplication of regulations that are already in place. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection has had decades of experience regulating this industry, and I believe they've done a good job of protecting the environment while allowing the industry to exist. The draft regulations as proposed are clearly designed to discourage the extraction of our natural gas resources and at the same time could adversely affect our agriculture, timber, and construction industries. Excessive setbacks, overarching definitions of what constitutes a water body, the DRBC now asserting themselves in land use issues, and the assigning of czar-like powers to the Executive Director of the DRBC is a recipe for economic disaster. The multiple layers of permits and fees is an outrageous overreach of bureau power. The cost of these various reviews ultimately will be borne by the consumer, and the river will be no cleaner than it is now. What are we doing? The obvious, less costly, less time-consuming, and more reasonable approach for the DRBC to take is to follow the Susquehanna River Basin model and cooperate with the Pennsylvania DEP and New York DEC. We all need clean water. We all need clean air, but the regulatory bodies are already in place. We do not need to create another giant bureaucracy at DRBC to regulate the regulators.[594.12][594.12](APPLAUSE).
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Thomas Eckstall, and I am Supervisor for the Town of Deposit in Delaware County, New York, on the west banks of the Delaware River. I am concerned that the amount of time allotted to speak makes it difficult to present meaningful comments. Be that as it may, it is my opinion that the proposed Delaware River Basin Commission draft natural gas development regulations are redundant and not needed. There currently exists a multitude of federal and state regulations in place that will adequately monitor the natural gas drilling. I refer you to the DRBC fact sheet, specifically the paragraph entitled Strategic Regulatory Framework, which clearly states the DRBC primarily relies on the oil and gas programs and experienced staff of the state in which the natural gas role is located to manage well, construction, and operation. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation soon will release their proposed regulations for natural gas production. Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection is already allowing for natural gas drilling in the Susquehanna River Basin. The natural gas industry is further regulated by the Clean Water Act, Safe Drinking Water Act, Clean Air Act, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, the National Environmental Policy Act, and the Occupational Safety and Health Act, to name a few. There are enough federal and state regulations to adequately oversee and monitor natural gas drilling operations. There are also continues to be concerns voiced over the types of fluids used in the fracking process. Many of the compounds are already used in non-drilling operations. Some of the products are swing pool chemicals and cleaning agents, pharmaceuticals, acrylic fiber and plastics, food additives, disinfectants, sterilizers for medical equipment, and more. These compounds end up back in the septic systems and back to the aquifers, and also through septic waste treatment plants. What the existing state regulatory agencies deal with the drilling. Further delay in drilling will also have a negative economic impact on the areas that are expecting drilling to begin.
My name is Chaz Agello. I am a landowner, a supervisor, and a planning commission member of Lebanon Township. I own an excavating business for the past 18 years and have 20 full-time and part-time employees. The economy is affecting all of us. Our farm has been in my family for 70 years. My wife and I took it over in 2002. We grow hay, corn, and we have horses. I love our farmland. It means the world to me. Each field holds many memories for me while I was growing up. I want responsible gas drilling and exploration in our area. The unrest in the Middle East, the deep recession we are in, the United States needs to tap into her natural resources now more than ever. The current excessive price of fuel and petroleum products has a devastating effect on my business and our local economy. We're wasting very valuable time creating overbearing rules that crisscross with existing rules that the state, county, and township already have in place. The DRBC regulations are making it so unattractive to the gas companies that we are in high jeopardy of having them pull out of Wayne County, which would be a devastating loss for all of us. So please do your job, but do not make this unattainable. Our government has more than enough red tape already. Importantly, in preserving the river, it is important to know that gas drilling means keeping larger parcels, farms, together versus subdivisions, which means more sewer, more stormwater, and you can do the math. Thank you for your time.[841.11][841.11](APPLAUSE).
I'm Jeff Dexter, Chair of the Damascus Township Board of Supervisors. We're hard-working people who have worked our lands for generations, our natural resources contributing to the development of our nation. In 1763, we began wrapping logs to Philadelphia to build ships carrying American commerce throughout the world. The main mass of USS Constitution was harvested here. The timber industry furnishes lumber for countless buildings, contributed to the tanning industry, timbers for the coal mines that fueled the Industrial Revolution, and ties for railroads binding the nation together. The sidewalks of New York City were built with stone from our quarries. Had you come here 50 years ago, you would have seen the countryside dotted with hundreds of family farms. Fresh milk and eggs could be in the urban markets within 24 hours. They're almost all gone, the farms, the families, the way of life. At one time, there were mills producing world-renowned cut glass, fabricating steel, cloth, and wood products. They're gone now, and with them thousands of jobs. Today, our best product is our children, who leave and do not return due to better economics elsewhere, and now they have left in such numbers, the school enrollments are declining. You're the Delaware River Basin Commission, charged to regulate river flows. With these proposals, it seems you want to enter the realm of land use regulation. We still harvest timber here, yet the amount of forest cover is increasing. The water quality produced on our lands is improving. Why do we need more rules and more agencies when we are increasing the amount of exceptional waters? Let us not forget that as a nation, we cannot continue to send our financial resources overseas for energy and our children to defend the supply line. We all drove here today. This building is warm and lighted. Natural gas is not the final energy solution. It's here now. It's less expensive. It is cleaner. We need this, not hobbled by regulations that duplicate the state. We need this done correctly. We need an economic future our children can prosper in.
My name is Bruce Varco. I'm a Dieberry Township Supervisor, owner of Varco Excavating, and a lifetime resident of Wayne County. My family owns a farm in Berlin Township that has been in the family for over 100 years. While it is no longer a working dairy farm, the cost of taxes maintaining the property and buildings continue to grow. The Marcellus shale could be a lifesaver for many people. Income from the gas industry would help residents with ever-increasing tax burdens and allow people to hold on to their land that has been in their families, such as mine, for generations. It also would allow individuals to make improvements to their properties and they were unable to do before. Although some regulation is needed, stifling regulation is not. The proposed regulation, the DRBC, makes drilling in Wayne County virtually impossible. The regulations proposed appear to favor the anti-drilling crowd. They are not designed as a guideline to safely drill within the watershed, but rather a way to prevent any drilling within the watershed. They go above and beyond existing regulations, which have already given us some of the cleanest water in the Commonwealth. Obviously, our current regulations are working. To enact additional and stifling regulation is unnecessary and impractical. As an example, stormwater management is already heavily regulated in New York and PA and does not need to be further complicated with redundant regulation. The DRBC regulations appear to ignore the needs and desires of Upper Basin residents to develop our resources and appeal to the desires of those living outside of the basin. I think we can agree that no one wants unsafe or poor-quality water. I will continue to live here and hope that our property stays in the family another 100 years. It has been said that the Marcellus shale could be one of the largest known natural gas deposits in the world. The economic benefits to the region could last for years to come. Regulations should be sensible, prudent, and practical. I find very little, if any, of this in the regulations. Thank you, sir.[1104.41][1104.41](APPLAUSE).
My name is Doug McClinkon from Bradford County. I'm here because Pennsylvania is in this together. Bradford County is experiencing 25% of the drilling in PA, which is the most in the state. We have 35 rigs drilling in Bradford County, five different energy companies. We have 848 wells permitted in 2010, 1,500 permitted to date, 1,442 active permits, 355 Marcellus wells drilled, 550 to date. We have 30 water withdrawals on our creeks and river, 76 water impoundments, and we have 243 miles of temporary water lines. Bradford County has seen no...
That's not you.
No erosion or sediment problems. We have seen no problems with our creeks, streams on the Susquehanna River. The flows are monitored well. Of the 12 or so water withdrawals located on three of our streams and our various locations on the Susquehanna River, they are environmentally safe and sound. They are professional. We have seen no problems or issues. Of the 80 freshwater impoundments, they are lined, fenced, all hold 10 million gallons of freshwater. We have seen no problems. All of these water issues have been done under the supervision and regulation of the Susquehanna River Basin Commission, with working in excellent harmony with the property owners and not infringing on private property rights. DEP has done a great job enforcing regulations, but also keeping abreast of the ever-changing technology. It is also very evident that there is a redundancy of environmental safeguards built into the industry practices itself. I bring firsthand experiences to the most drilled-on counties and states of Pennsylvania because the most information out there is misinformation, which I deal on a daily basis. I would just close by saying this: There is nothing better to save family farms and open space and greenways than a Marcellus shale. It's been wonderful in Bradford County.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Labar. I'm a Canaan Township Supervisor, Chairman of the Wayne Economic Development Corporation, and owner of Labar Computer Services, and I live in Waymark, Pennsylvania. The proposed DRBC regulations are completely over the top, and if not revised, may leave our area with no ability to utilize the natural gas resource that lies below us. Most of the well pad standards in the DRBC regulations duplicate state regulations and are simply unnecessary. Those additional standards that are offered are completely unrealistic. I am especially concerned about the 500-foot setback from water bodies and wetlands. A typical five-acre well pad would be 400 to 450 feet on each side. A 500-foot buffer around such a pad would require roughly 40 to 50-acre site that is free of any water bodies or wetlands. While this might sound reasonable, the definition of water body includes anything with any amount of water, including wetlands. There are virtually no areas in Canaan Township or Wayne County where 40 to 50 continuous acres of land lacking these features can be found. None of the existing well sites could meet the standards because there are small ponds, streams, ditches, terraces, wetlands within 500 feet of all them. This tells me we'll never get another gas well with these standards. We don't need additional standards to interfere with state regulations that are working. We do need this industry, and I suggest the regulations be revised to defer to the states which are doing a good job.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Fritz, lifelong resident of Wayne County and at present, my second term as Mayor of Holmesdale. I'm proud to come from a family of resolute and hard-working entrepreneurs. My grandfather founded a water well drilling business in 1932. My father is a water well driller, and I've spent countless hours as his rig helpmate. Water well drillers bring an essential-to-life resource from underground to the surface for use by us. I view the need for bringing natural gas to the surface in the same manner. This energy resource is essential to life. We have this supply underneath our feet. The fear of choking on polluted water is very much valid. However, the fear of choking on unnecessary and extreme regulation is also a grave thought for freedom-demanding property owners. I assert that we strike a working balance. That balance, I believe, can be achieved here in Wayne County using a strategy that involves a single, organized, reputable natural gas drilling company who proceeds in a measured manner, using the most up-to-date, safe extraction methods, and operates closely with state regulators using already-in-place state regulations. The DRBC should simply aim to shadow the state and provide guidance and expertise in a situational manner. Thank you for your time.[1413.01][1413.01](APPLAUSE).
I am Arlene Lattarette, an auditor and resident of Oregon Township. As Wayne County property owners, my husband Clinton and I and our families have almost 700 acres under gas company lease. Both of us are sixth-generation Wayne County residents and taxpayers coming from farmer stock that has made their living from the land. We believe that our vigilance, the landowner protective lease we signed, and the federal state regulations that are in place two years ago were sufficient to ensure the protection of the land and the watershed we love. When the DRBC draft regulations were published, I was dismayed at the proposed redundant regulations from yet another agency on gas drilling in our area, which with implementation will set precedents that could also negatively impact the farmer, the builder, and the forester. There are multiple agencies already regulating the gas industry, and there is a court system in place to protect any landowner from any damages that would be done to our property. The regulations proposed seem discriminatory to the gas industry, holding the drilling companies to a higher standard than any other user of the water. I am concerned that the proposed regulations favor the downstream water users over the taxpayers and property owners at the source of the water squing into the Delaware water basin. How can we, the residents of Wayne County, be considered secondary in terms of our uses for the water when we, as farmers and landowners, have implemented best-in-practice soil conservation measures and watershed standards in the way we go about making our living? We need to move quickly on this plane, especially with recent events in the Middle East, northern African oil-rich countries where our national supplies could disappear in an instant. My nieces recently received her orders to be deployed to Afghanistan in June. I'm sorry? As our family supports our national energy interests with a military perspective, we also want to support our national energy needs here in our backyard. Let the gas companies get on with their business of providing energy. Please stop the redundancy and delay.[1554.11][1554.11](APPLAUSE).
Welcome to Wayne County. My name is Jane Varco. I am Vice President of the Waymark Borough Council. I am proud to say I am a fourth-generation Wayne County resident. My great-grandfather immigrated to Wayne County from Cornwall in 1865 to preach from the Good Book, riding horseback around our county, crossing the Delaware River at Narisburg, serving different congregations. His homestead was a farm. He supplemented his income by shoveling coal on the railcars of the D&amp;H Gravity Railroad. He also cut bluestone along the Delaware. His lesson passed through generations is, "We are one with this land, and its bounty is provided to us through his word and hard work." Since 1798, Wayne County residents have loved this impossibly, sometimes unforgiving rocky land. Daily, we read about the Marcellus shale and the 1,147 gas wells today in Pennsylvania. When will Wayne County become part of this immense find? The largest producer of gas in our Commonwealth is our western bordering county of Susquehanna. What is the difference between Susquehanna County and Wayne County? Only one geographical fact: Their watershed is the Susquehanna River, and ours is the Delaware River. Those who have moved into Wayne County and those who are attending today's hearing who do not live here profess it is their mission to save our environment, our water, and us. For the last 200 years, we who live here have protected our land and water. Thank you, but we do not need saving. We have in place the Wayne County Conservation District and the Department of Environmental Resources. What we need are decent, good-paying jobs. The gas industry can provide them. I respectfully ask the Delaware River Commission to adopt similar regulations as set forth by the Susquehanna River Commission, and please do not place on our land another layer of
I'm Joe Canfield, Vice Chairman of Damascus Township and landowner of Damascus Township. Parents also have a farm in Damascus, and we are very good stewards of the land. We know how to take care of it, and we don't need somebody telling us how to do it. I think the RBC's commentary and PowerPoint presentation is a little bit over, is a little bit misleading. I think that the people's rights are in danger here, and they're trying to be hindered and restricted. The total number of Marcellus land that they're proposing is 36% of the DRBC River Basin, when in fact it's probably closer to 10% based on where the productive shale formation lays, with Damascus Township being at or near the edge of that formation, knowing that the shale runs northeast-southwest. If you draw a line, it doesn't go down to Carbon County. It also cuts down to your proposed number of pads, 2,200 pads, in the Delaware River Basin. Logically, it would bring that number down closer to 300 to 500 pads over the course of a 20-year period. This also, I feel this also is exaggerated. In the water withdrawal, you're saying it takes 5 million gallons. Industry's saying 1 to 3. The water just comes back out of these wells. They have ecological technology to recycle the water, which you're well aware of, as well other avenues of fracking. Also, the DRBC is funded by the states, who are funded by the taxpayers. The state's funded by the... The state's funded by the taxpayer. It's our money, coming from our land, from our homes, from the private sector. People need this economic development in this county and in the township and in the state to further our living and further our being.
My name is Peter Lozarek. I am a farmer and a township supervisor in South Canaan Township, Wayne County. Marcellus shale drilling flourishes outside of the DRBC territory, but where your regulations took the northeast out of the play. What manufacturing we had left for foreign lands. Agriculture is becoming a thing of the past. Our dependency on foreign fuel will never end if we don't start now. Our farm has 90 acres, 20 acres tillable, all hills, 70 acres, trees plus wetlands. With your setbacks and slope restrictions, we would never be considered. This is typical of Wayne County: water and trees. As a township supervisor, I am aware property owners' rights are being lost every year. Our state has been regulating gas drilling for more than one generation. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. I could sooner accept the dry well. It's better to have tried and failed than never to know.
Hi, I'm good old Beverly Watson, and I speak for Preston Township Supervisors Alan Jones and Robert Cinco. We are in favor of gas drilling. We believe it will have a shot in the arm for Preston Township, Northern Wayne, and Wayne County, like a shot of B-12, a shot of adrenaline, and a good shot of Scotch. We do not go gently into anyone's dark night, including the DCRB, trying to take over the managing of our own land, stall with the development of greatly-needed supply of natural resources with the drillers we trust and verify. Thank you for your time, and may God bless the USA.
I am Carol Woodman-Cee. I am a property owner, and I have a constitutional right to my property. We demand that you relinquish control of our Pennsylvania land to our Department of Environmental Protection Agency and our rightfully-elected representatives immediately. Carol Collier, you have the audacity to claim that your proposed regulations prevail over our Commonwealth, disregarding our own laws. Pennsylvania owns 51% of the land in the Delaware River Basin, but has only a 20% influence in the decisions made affecting our land. You were not elected to represent us. We will not stand by while you proclaim yourself an autocrat who can confiscate our Pennsylvania land rights without remuneration to us, going so far as attempt to eliminate our right to cut our own trees and our right to decide where on our property we want to locate a well. You are, in fact, endeavoring to remove the chance of our land from being qualified for a gas well by imposing requirements that are impossible to meet and vague guidelines as to what would constitute a violation of the rules. You know, if you delay the process long enough, the gas companies will become fed up with your nonsense, leave the area, and go elsewhere to drill. You do not live here, work here, have children here. You do not give a squat about the citizens and property owners of Wayne County. Bradford County has the lowest unemployment rate in our state. They drill for gas safely, while 37% of citizens in Wayne County receive government aid because there are no jobs. If the DRBC continues in its present course, it will kill gas drilling, kill the prospect of new jobs, eradicate a substantial money infusion into Wayne County's economy. Carol Collier, your true agenda is to never cut a tree, put Wayne County out of business, and condemn us to an existence of bucolic poverty. I have two uncles who received Purple Hearts because they died in wars fighting to protect the very rights you intend to take away from me. DRBC Commissioners, stick to your original compact. Promote industry.
My name is Michelle Stahl. I am a landowner and a financial advisor. I live in Holmesdale, Pennsylvania. The proposed regulations are seriously flawed and treat our states, who have been doing an excellent job regulating gas drilling for decades, like they were little more than potted plants. I am deeply disappointed we had to wait three years for these ill-conceived standards that would prevent drilling everywhere except on our unreachable and forested hilltops. We need natural gas now to invigorate our economy. Every day, I sit with residents who are struggling to pay bills and save for the future, yet the DRBC acts as if it had no responsibility to these families and no mandate to ensure water is available for employment, industry, and economic development as its compact provides. Instead, we have gotten arbitrary standards that supersede the states and would create a whole new bureaucracy with zero experience regulating gas drilling. What could be more wrong-headed? The DRBC has a role, but it should be to advise the states, not supervise them. Put the responsibility where the experience is, with our capable states. We don't need additional standards and reviews that interfere with already-working state regulation. We do desperately need this industry and have waited far too long for it. The only person making money from gas at this moment is Josh Fox. Unless these regulations are revised to defer to the states, that fox will have cleaned out our hen house.
Hello, I'm John Woodman-Cee, property owner. I find myself in an unusual situation today. I am standing before people I do not know, that hail from I know not where, with qualifications I have not heard supposedly, to ask or even plead that I be allowed to maintain at least some of my property rights, while this group strips away many of them. I'm expected to be polite and courteous as the DRBC develops regulations that not only essentially ends natural gas exploration in the river basin, but starts us down the slippery slope of oversight of our properties and restrictions of our rights from elected strangers from strange lands. Does anyone from Wayne County have or even want any regulatory power over any part of New York, New Jersey? Absolutely not. It seems that we are the victims of gravity as water flows downhill. For some reason, many of those downstream feel that they have the need and the right to follow a river back to its headwaters and to control every hillside and meadow that sends its treasure flowing to the sea. That theory, carried to the extremes proposed by the DRBC, spells the economic asphyxiation of the unfortunate section of Wayne County that falls in a watershed. We watch our neighbors just over the ridge in the same county, in the same school district, market their resources while we cannot. You are denying us the rights to compete in business and commerce with our neighbors. You are shafting us economically by removing rights others in our Commonwealth enjoy. I do not accept your assertion that my land is yours to control, that I cannot market my resources, that I cannot cut my trees, that I must be at the mercy of the DRBC. I'm not asking you to allow us all of our constitutional rights. Rather, I'm telling you that I will not be giving them up willingly, and I will not go silently into the night. This struggle has just begun.
Hi, my name is Judy Ahrens. I'm a landowner. I own 129 acres of land in Wayne County. The farm that I live on has been in my family for 44 years. At this point, I look at the rules and regulations that are coming in. Excessive setbacks and all-inclusive definitions of what constitutes a water body is a woodchuck hole that gets filled with rain and trickles down a stream of water. Is that a waterway? State's rights, as well as property owners' rights, are not being adequately protected. The DRBC cannot be allowed to develop into an unaccountable agency. DRBC is overstepping the limitations of the compact, ignoring the responsibility of economic development in this area. I have nine grandchildren and one great-grandchild. What is their future in Wayne County? Other industries will be adversely affected: timber, farming. And the jurisdiction, by your own words, the rule, and can be decided upon by the executive director solely, does not make this America. The regulations are discriminatory against landowners. Concerns of the people downstream appear to supersede those of the taxpayers and residents. Regulations are fee-driven. DRBC might no longer...
Thank you.
I am Barbara Conklin. I'm a landowner and WPOA member, and also co-owner of Conklin Logging. My husband Francis and I operated a mom-and-pop logging business for the past 53 years. As stewards of the land, we have watched our industry become deeply regulated. Proposed drilling regulations using terms of broad definitions contain restrictions which could cripple already-regulated management practices of our industry, as well as the drilling industry, specifically clear cut and setback. We have just completed a harvest of disease and insect-infested hardwood from our timber lot. Clear cut wasn't needed, but in many cases, the proposed restriction is unrealistic, as our area faces a constant threat to insects and diseases. Basin-wide, the threat and the threat of unforeseen natural disease is constant. The 500-foot setback is also unrealistic, given the lay of the land. Locally, the Soil Conservation District enforces regulations of all soil disturbances for DEP under Chapter 102 by requiring a comprehensive erosion and sedimentation plan for every harvest. A staff forestry specialist is available for assistance in enforcement. Some townships have timber harvesting ordinances. The DEP regulates permits of earth disturbance over one acre and sets all rules regarding stream quality. Wayne County streams are mostly rated as either high or exceptional value. According to DEP, timber harvesting adds 2/10 to 1% of the sediment found in our streams, and largely due to our industry's success in limiting sediment, is considered upgrading some of our high-quality streams to exceptional. Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Index, a program created by DEP, is used to identify and protect endangered plants and animals during earth disturbances. PennDOT maintains weight limits on our roads, and the federal government adds a layer protection from the Clean Water Act. Well-qualified independent forestry consultants offer assistance. With this expertise in regulation, in our industry, there is no need for additional regulations.
Good afternoon. I'm David Callahan, representing the Marcellus Shale Coalition, a multi-state organization advancing the responsible development of natural gas in this region. The MSC fully shares your mission of proper planning, conservation, and development of our precious water resources. We want to help you get the regulatory process right and in a timely way. Nonetheless, there are some significant flaws in the commission's approach that must be addressed. The requirement of a natural gas development plan is unworkable, mandating our industry to detail infrastructure plans years prior to any development. Few industries can provide such plans that far in advance. The call for streamlined commission review of future development is an advertised benefit of the proposed regulations, but in practical effect may require full commission review for every well pad. A number of the proposed regulations, ranging from unjustifiably restrictive siting standards to excessive bonding requirements, overreach and may reduce natural gas production. Empowering the executive director to prescribe standards on a case-by-case basis without any real ability for affected parties to challenge these decisions raises questions about the commission's capacity to administer this process. The proposed standards relating to siting, design, and operation of natural gas well pads are a significant departure from the commission's traditional role regarding the review of water resource projects within the basin. They raise a real question as to whether the commission has legal authority to impose such standards. The MSC is concerned that natural gas activities have been singled out by the commission and may be required to adhere to standards not imposed on other industries with similar or greater impacts from land clearing and alteration. This apparent effort to single out natural gas development has led to proposed regulations that overlap or even conflict with both state regulations and even the DRBC's own existing water withdrawal and wastewater programs. Ultimately, this consistency will only serve to bring regulatory and public confusion and impatience.
Hello, I'm Tracy Corluccio from Delaware Riverkeeper Network. The natural gas and oil industry is exempt from major portions of all environmental regulations at the federal level, save Drinking Water Act, Clean Water Act that protects our streams, Clean Air Act that protects the air we breathe, and even industrial accountability laws that would make them clean up pollution that they're responsible for. And the result of this? They're running amok. The natural gas industry is running amok across the United States, across the shale fairway, across Pennsylvania, and now, as of this morning, across what's left of the state forest in Pennsylvania. Thank you, Governor Corbett, for shamelessly exploiting the public's last great forest in the state. There's a scandalous 2,486 violations in 2010 alone at natural gas sites. Communities are suffering as a result. And now, the natural gas industry wants to come over here, to the wild and scenic Delaware River, and run wild over our watershed. The DRBC, sadly, you're rushing up to meet them with rules that are not based on the scientific study that you needed to do before crafting any regulations at all. The result of this? These rules will not prevent individual catastrophic pollution events, and they also will not prevent the cumulative environmental degradation that you are supposed to prevent. The failure to meet the legal mandate that you have, according to your compact and your statutory requirements, preventing pollution and avoiding degradation of the exceptional water quality of the Delaware River and its outstanding features, that is inexcusable, and we're not going to accept it. Three words: Do no harm. That's the standard that you vayver under, and you have not met it with these regulations. The DRBC is our only defense against gas land, and we will not let you sacrifice our water for gas.
My name is Tom Shepstone. I'm a landowner and a planning consultant here in Holmesdale. Our region is stagnant. Our agriculture and manufacturing are all but gone. Our schools are losing enrollment. We need natural gas to revive our economy, and the DRBC compact mandates it ensure water for employment, industry, and economic development. The regulations, however, say nothing of these obligations. They treat our region as a sparsely populated source watershed, as if our needs were secondary. I have written and reviewed hundreds of local laws. Fundamentally, these regulations are unbalanced, and they rely upon very naive assumptions. The process is precisely backwards. It puts DRBC staff with zero experience in regulating gas in charge over states with extensive experience. Common sense suggests the state should be in charge, with the DRBC serving as an interested agency to recommend different standards in special cases. This would put professional regulators in charge while allowing a DRBC role. This approach would deliver certainty without compromising standards and ensure competent enforcement. It can be accomplished by simple agreements with the states, avoiding one-size-fits-all standards and redundant preconstruction reviews of well pads. Section 7.5 is an unprecedented intrusion on the states that illustrates DRBC inexperience. The 500-foot setback and 20% slope rules will drive any possible drilling to a very few forested plateaus that are not only inaccessible, but which the regulations say should be protected. The failure of the DRBC to test its standards for glaciated areas like ours and understand such unintended consequences demonstrates precisely why it cannot be in charge. These regulations must be revised to defer to the states. And I would also say, Bill, I just want to make one point: There is life above Narisburg. And to the last speaker, it's not your watershed, it's ours.
Hello, my name is Paul Saunders from Bethel, Pennsylvania. I worked for 32 years as a senior manufacturing process engineer in the semiconductor device production area. I have three important scientific facts for you today. First and most importantly, hydraulic fracturing, fracking, has been used for decades as a safe extraction process on hundreds of thousands of wells. There is no scientific evidence to support the radical environmentalist's claim that horizontal fracturing is any more dangerous than vertical fracturing. Of the 3,000 wells horizontally fracked in Pennsylvania, only three wells had defects, and those defects were in the shallow... and those defects were in the shallow vertical, I repeat, vertical concrete casings. These shallow defects regrettably led to well water contamination for 14 to 18 families in Dimmock, PA. However, the Pennsylvania DEP shut down these wells. The DEP heavily fined the drilling company, and the DEP tightened requirements on inspections and construction of these concrete casings. All of the state DEPs of the Delaware River Basin have more than sufficient regulatory control over these drilling procedures and operations to protect water purity in the basin without additional industry-crippling layers of regulatory bureaucracy. Second, the law of physics, which states that fluids flow along the path of least resistance, dictates that flow-back water from the extraction process will move up through zero resistance, wide-open shafts, well shafts, and not, as science illiterates claim, through the extreme resistance of millions of tiny cracks in 3,000 to 8,000 feet of solid rock between the horizontal fracking site and water aquifers. Third, this nation must abandon baseless environmentalist hyperbole and lies and begin to recognize that natural gas is our nation's best low-cost energy solution. Natural gas is abundantly found throughout our nation, and most notably here in northeastern Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
My name is Aaron Price, and I am from Windsor, New York. The Marcellus Shale is the key to a future of energy independence here in the Northeast. With the Marcellus Shale and the other shales around this nation, we have the opportunity to move towards sustainable and promising resources to meet our country's energy demands. The regulations being considered by the Delaware River Basin Commission would effectively stop development of the Marcellus Shale in many parts of New York, in many parts of Pennsylvania. To steer away from natural gas would represent a colossal step backwards. A vast reserve of natural gas would suddenly be off-limits to both rural landowners and urban consumers. For a few moments, I'd like you to consider what a world without natural gas would look like. A world without natural gas means more coal will be burned. More coal being burned will release more carbon dioxide and sulfur into the atmosphere and more mercury into our rivers, our lakes, and our streams. A world without natural gas means less jobs in cities and towns up and down the eastern seaboard, less tax revenues for state and local governments, which means less resources to protect our environment, and more money sent overseas to governments who care little for their citizens and even less for the environment. That is a glimpse of our country without natural gas. It is a troubling picture, and not the kind any of us desire for ourselves or for coming generations. But this is where we will end up if we do not welcome the opportunity at hand. Hard-working men and women of this country are ready to develop the tremendous resource underneath their feet. Seizing this opportunity will be an investment, an investment that comes back to us in the form of clean air, jobs, and economic prosperity. Thank you.
Carolyn Price, Windsor, New York, Broom County. I have read the Delaware River Basin Commission vision statement and commend you for a well-written document. Today, I would like to focus on two ways you accomplish your mission: integrating environmental and economic needs and basing decisions on sound science. Both of these points are very important in regard to the draft natural gas development regulations. You've spent a great deal of time looking at environmental needs. What about economic needs? For example, the three counties farthest north in the Delaware River Basin, and I'm using 2008 U.S. Census Bureau statistics, Wayne County, household income median $45,736; Broom County, $42,614; Delaware County, $39,821. And the poverty level in those counties, people living below the poverty level, Wayne County, 13.4%, Broom County, 14.2%, and Delaware County, 16.5%. Clearly, there are economic needs that must be integrated with the environmental needs. Responsibly and safely developing natural gas in counties like these will give people the opportunity to raise their household income and the opportunity to rise above the poverty level. Basing your decisions on sound science is also very much needed. Why? People have been bombarded through the media, internet, television, radio, newspapers, et cetera, with information that is often misleading and sometimes false. This has instilled fears about natural gas development that are not based on science but on Hollywood hype and political maneuvering. Stick to your vision and your mission. Integrate environmental and economic needs and base your decisions on science.
My name is Chris Lacy. I am a landowner from Broom County, New York, and I am sick and tired of people from New York City and Hollywood and MoveOn.org telling me what I can do on my own land. These so-called environmentalists are nothing more than hypocrites. They use fossil fuel every day but refuse any responsibility for producing it. In 2011, America is still dependent on fossil fuel. We are not ready to replace the 85% of our energy that comes from fossil fuel with some hype dream of green energy. And maybe New York City should clean its own house before telling upstate what to do. New York City produces 14,000 tons of garbage every day and ships it off to some rural communities for them to deal with. And New York City is worried about their water supply? The Delaware Aqueduct leaks 35 million gallons of water a day. Since 2001, over 100 billion gallons of water have simply leaked away. These people want to regulate drilling to death while they continue to use the environment they claim to love as a dumping ground for their trash, while they continue to use upstate as a cheap source of drinking water and an annex for their overcrowded prisons. Maybe it's time for upstate to stand up and say, "No, you can keep your regulations and your trash and your prisoners, and we'll keep our water, our freedom, and our natural gas." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Sidorelli. I am a landowner in Hunterdon County, New Jersey, and I also own land up in Equinock, Pennsylvania. I want to say that the New Jersey Highlands Commission has stripped my land rights in New Jersey, and now the DRBC wants to strip my land rights here in Wayne County. There is an energy revolution taking place in this country, and I like to say, as of this morning, I think that a barrel of oil has hit $100 and is going up as we speak. The future is electricity and heat for our homes and, yes, our cars generated by clean natural gas. Solar, windmills, and hydroelectric plants will not provide enough. The burning of coal to produce electricity is poisoning our land, air, and water, and yes, it is poisoning the Delaware River, as we all know. If the DRBC and the NWPOA can compromise on a set of fair regulations to drill and transport natural gas in a safe and efficient manner, we can become the leader in this revolution that the rest of the country can look up to. These DRBC regulations, if left untouched, are designed to stop all drilling in Wayne County. While the other counties within the SRBC will fuel the revolution, the 500-foot setbacks and the all-inclusive definition of what constitutes a water body are excessive, and the restrictions on forest clearing will prevent drilling on virtually all land in the upper Delaware River Basin.
Thank you.
Betty Sutcliffe, lifelong resident of Damascus Township, Damascus, Pennsylvania. I'd like to welcome you to Wayne Highlands School District, where I had the privilege and pleasure of teaching for 36 years. Wealthy in its beauty, Wayne County is not wealthy in its purse. 40% of the students here are on free or reduced lunch. Western Wayne is at 47%, up 3% since October, and Wall and Paw Pack at 50%. The DRBC, according to its compact, must take economic development into consideration, balancing it equally in its decisions. The curriculum that I taught to my students included a study of Pennsylvania, the symbols of our state, including its motto: virtue, liberty, and independence. Yet there appears to be a conflict between our state's motto and the draft regulations of the DRBC. Overstepping its compact and attempting to expand its influence and authority into land use issues, the DRBC is putting our liberty and independence at risk. In a recent interview, former Pennsylvania DEP Secretary John Hanger stated that rather than involving the federal government, it's better to have these questions decided close to home. It's Pennsylvania's water. It's Pennsylvania's air. It's Pennsylvania's land. Commissioner Hines, we are counting on you to protect the autonomy of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Is this your testimony?
My name's Kathy Reicheck. I'm just a regular resident and taxpayer, and I just have a few comments. Forget for a moment the scary accidents that have already occurred and have been well-documented at drilling sites. There's talk of how gas drilling will have such a major impact on our local economy. I believe that. I believe it'll have quite an impact by devastating our present tourist-based economy and rendering useless any impetus to even visit our area. We're all here because of one of the most beautiful places on the face of the earth. Our economy relies on outdoor enthusiasts drawn to pristine natural surroundings and wish to fish, boat, swim, ski, hike, and vacation. Who will buy property or a second home or want a vacation in a place where you can't use the water overlooking a wasteland? Is that really good for our economy? It seems to me that it will surely and most negatively impact our resorts, our restaurants, our realtors, and our local businesses. Those who have signed leases and the gas companies want to push for immediate drilling without any environmental impact studies because they're just concerned about the immediate and the now. Will the gas companies provide jobs? Maybe not. They'll probably bring in their own people. Will the gas companies provide health care for those exposed to the secret chemicals we're not supposed to know anything about? If it's so darn safe, why aren't they anxious to prove that? Because I don't think it is. I asked one woman who had signed a lease what she would do if her well was contaminated, and she replied, "Well, then, they'll fix it." Contaminated groundwater cannot be fixed. Nobody had told her that. The DRBC's legal mandate is to do no harm. I urge you to take that mandate seriously.
Hello and good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Sue Mickley. My family goes back to the 1730s on the Delaware, and I've lived in various areas up and down the Delaware myself. I do want to say, my dad always said, "Look at the big picture." We all know that we have an energy crisis throughout the world, but we also have a population crisis. According to the latest National Geographic, they are now projecting that in the next 25 years, the population will increase 30 to 50% in the world. The demand for resources is going to be huge. No conservancy or green energy is going to address the problems that will occur throughout the world in need for energy. We conserve ourselves and release the consumption of energy elsewhere in the world for these growing population bases. Another big-picture item to look at is National Geographic did a story on the electric grid in the United States, and they said, "Based on the green energy technology being proposed, there would need to be a $200 billion upgrade to the national grid in order to compensate for the unreliable resources generated through green energy." Natural gas doesn't have that problem, and not only that, the natural gas grid is not on the back of the taxpayers, but the corporations do their own grid, and it comes out of their own pocket and their own profits, not off our backs. Please help Wayne County thrive. Don't ask us to be a substitute for thriving somewhere else. Give us our fair share and be reasonable on your science, which is way off-base. The statistics in the beginning of the presentation, which are the foundations of this proposed regulations, are way exaggerated and need to be evaluated and reduced by talking to professionals in the industry. It kind of actually shows that you don't have the expertise in this industry to regulate it. Thank you very much.
My name is Bob Rutledge. I'm a lifelong resident and landowner of Wayne County. I grew up and still reside in my family's 500-acre farm. I've spent in our family since the mid-1800s. When it comes to the draft regulations, it's apparent to me the DRBC does not want gas drilling in the watershed period. A few examples of this are your 500-foot setbacks, which in effect bans gas drilling in our area. On our 500-acre farm, which is mostly open fields, there's not a single spot that would meet this criteria. National parks have less restrictive setbacks. Another regulation states that the pad sites cannot be in wooded areas, and the gas industry cannot cut more than three acres of trees on any site. It kind of sounds like the DRBC is signaling the gas industry to live by higher standards than any other industry. And it also sounds like the DRBC is trying to expand its grip on our area by getting involved in land use issues. This concerns me because today, it's the gas industry; tomorrow, it's going to be every landowner, and that wants to do anything with his land, harvests trees, or perhaps clear a building site. In the permitting process, the DRBC places no time restrictions on themselves whatsoever, and you've already proven to us how that can turn out. It took quite three years to get to this point. You know, it just caused death by delay. And the regulations also give way too much to the executive director. In America, no single person should have the power to control the financial sovereignty of an entire region. In conclusion, I would suggest the DRBC abide by its own compact, consider our rights as landowners and Americans, and leave the regulation of the gas industry up to the states where they have skilled, knowledgeable, and experienced staff.
My name is Trevor Walshack. I'm a landowner in Wayne County, Pleasant Mount Township, a third-generation small-business owner, and also the vice president of the National Association of Royalty Owners Pennsylvania Chapter. Failure to lift this drilling moratorium shortly thereafter will be a great infringement on the private property rights of those landowners within the Delaware River Basin who have faithfully paid their taxes in good faith while thinking that their property's future was theirs to determine. The Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution states, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." Therefore, if the DRBC continues these restrictions, which would prevent a private mineral owner from developing their mineral interests, that is a government entity taking our private property, and consequently, the government should then be responsible for just compensation. When this recession hit our family-owned business, it took our workforce of 33 full-time employees to less than 15. Like many, we began seeking work with the natural gas industry, and we're on the road to bringing those workers back and then some. In the last two years of working right alongside drill rigs, I've witnessed the rapid strides the industry has made to improve upon itself by employing new technology, techniques, and strategies proven to shore up environmental stress points. Each time we were on a job, we were encouraged to surpass what was required. The companies exploring know how the cost of doing it wrong is larger than the cost of doing it right, so they're doing it better and safer every time they drill a well. I've been there, and I've seen it. To date in Pennsylvania, over 2,000 Marcellus wells have been drilled and hydraulically fractured successfully. This is saving local jobs, our homes, our farms, our businesses. We need to keep Pennsylvania natural gas competitive in this global market, not by burdening it with costly layers of overlapping bureaucracy, like we have done to every other industry in the United States. The oil and gas industry is truly America's industry, the only industry left where we're still the pioneers of technology the entire world turns to. Every piece of drilling equipment on location says, "Made in America." That is creating American jobs, and tens of thousands of those jobs are being done right here in Pennsylvania by your neighbors and hopefully soon in Wayne County as well.
Thank you.[1795.82]
My name is Bill Gager. I'm a lifetime resident in Wayne County. Passed supervisor-chairman for eighteen years in Damascus. I put an article in the paper, the letter to the editor, to the public, saying some of my questions. DVRC is, I think, way over their bounds. In New York State, they took a lot of land and put water ponds in Downsville, Cannonsville. They ought to check all the water flow meters from New York City, the waste that goes on down there. And it's a shame that the private people are being stepped on. And I think Pennsylvania should probably withdraw from the DVRC. We're being harassed by other states, which is not right. And in closing, I think a lot of the comments, a lot of the things that come from BRC and some other sources reminds me of one thing: A minor salesman with a mouthful of samples. Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Wood. I'm executive director of Wayne Economic Development Corporation, and represent over two hundred businesses in our region, and welcome to Wayne County. It is the DRBC's, VRC's responsibility under its compact to balance environmental protection while ensuring water is available for employment, industry, and economic development. The proposed regulations in their current form will not advance the safe, responsible development of the natural gas industry in Wayne County. Creating new economic opportunities and jobs with family-sustaining wages in Wayne County is imperative. Wayne County's per capita is the lowest of the Pennsylvania counties under the DRBC's jurisdiction. The counties to the south of us in the mid-Basin region enjoy a median household income averaging forty-one percent higher than ours. Our manufacturing employment has declined thirty-five percent in the last ten years. Our economy is dominated by the retail and service sectors. Because we value and protect our water quality, we are being penalized by overregulation, which is making it harder to invest in our communities. If this trend continues, Wayne County could simply become a playground where future generations will be in service to those who could afford to visit or live here, or retire here. The potential economic benefits of the natural gas drilling industry are huge. This industry is expected to generate an average of six hundred direct jobs annually, and produce 1.5 billion in new economic activity in Wayne County, more than doubling our personal income with all the attendant benefits of community institutions, health, open space preservation, energy availability, and security. I urge you to revise the draft regulations to promote the safe development of the natural gas industry, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can start? I'd like to get ahead of him. My name is Ron Collins. I'm a lifelong resident of Wayne County. My brother and I own the farm that we both grew up on. We've cared for and paid the taxes on this property for over seventy years. No one is more concerned with protecting that property than we are. I also have thirty-seven years of experience in construction and maintenance of high-voltage power lines and substations. I retired from PPL in two thousand and five as the operating manager in charge of all crews and field engineering throughout Wayne, Pike, Monroe, and Lackawanna Counties. Working with our competent state regulators, we successfully added and upgraded hundreds of miles of electrical transmission and substation infrastructure. Before signing a gas lease for our property, we investigated industry standards, listened to Penn State representatives who helped develop those standards. I find the industry standards for drilling and recovering of gas to be both safe and effective. The industry and regulators have proven, have a proven good record over many years. It is unwise for the DRBC to take the lead from our proven state agencies. These draft regulations will actually result in blocking all production and economic development in our area. Applying these regulations to a typical thousand-acre plot eliminates ninety-nine-point-five percent of the area from any production, and leaves the remaining one-half of one percent inaccessible and undesirable as wooded areas. This amounts to discrimination against taxpayers and residents in headwater regions, and while other regions of the state will economically benefit, we will not.
My name is Daryl Miller. I come here from Bradford County, Terry Township. I'm here as a property owner and small businessman, to attest to the fact that there are benefits that go along with natural gas drilling. Natural gas drilling can and is being done in an environmentally friendly manner. Case in point, I have neighbors of mine whose well water has in fact been affected by the natural gas drilling. About a year ago, they started drilling in our small township. There was methane migration that happened in some neighboring wells. Just last Saturday, I was into some of those neighbors' houses, and DEP had given them a clean bill of health. The industry stayed on top of it, and apparently has fixed the problem. The economic benefits to our county are uncalculable. Case in point, we have had many, many businesses come to our area that weren't there before. There are many businesses there that are expanding their operations. We've had excavation businesses that have expanded their operations. We've seen ads in papers this last Sunday in our local paper. I counted sixty different ads, want ads, for jobs, family-sustaining jobs. Five years ago, you were lucky to find a half a dozen ads. Thank you.
My name is Richard Lenz. I'm a twelve-year resident of Damascus Township, and the impact of these regulations will be the difference between farming my fifty acres of land in my retirement years, which are coming up very quickly, and leaving the property to my four children or having to sell my land. It is very important that the Delaware River Basin Commission does not misrepresent information and numbers that lead to inaccurate conclusions. In Section seven-point-five, A1 of the regs, it states, and I quote, "Over fifteen million people rely on the waters of the Delaware River Basin for drinking, agriculture, and industrial use." The fifteen million people include about seven million people in New York City and northern New Jersey who live outside the basin. This is misleading. New York City's watershed has five major reservoirs, three of which are in the Delaware River Basin, and two, the Ocho Can and Roundout Reservoirs, are not in the basin. So the three that are in the basin provide only three-fifths of the water, not a hundred percent. The delivering system of getting the water to New York City is leaking thirty-seven million gallons a day. And with the three, that's twenty-two million gallons a day that the DRBC, I'm not saying you're allowing, but, you know, that we could be having here. Philadelphia and its surrounding area accounts for some percentage of the other eight million that the Delaware River Basin provides water for. Do you know that Philadelphia also has six other watersheds totaling two thousand three hundred and seven square miles, and one of the watersheds, the Schoolkill, provides water to 1.5 million people? Trenton, New Jersey, has nineteen watersheds.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Carl Wosner. I live in Mylinville, Damascus, where I'm a full-time resident and raising my young family there. I'm a local business owner, as is my wife. I live directly adjacent to the Crum site, as you may recall. I came before you last year in Trenton with a gallon of brown water. You might remember that. So, water quality and quantity is your concern. A court of law has already proved that quantity is at risk, and that industry cannot police itself. Quantity is already at risk as well with population growth and the typical related industry growth. This notion of using drinking water to get gas out of the ground is absurd. You know that quantity is already a problem in the long term, and yet you're considering wasting it. My personal experience with drilling has not been good. During the drilling last summer at the Crum site, we were forced to move out of our house for six weeks because of the noise, the vibrations, the nuisance, twenty-four-seven. I had to take my kids and my wife and leave. We just couldn't live there. And that has nothing to do with water quantity or quality, which has nothing to do with you, I realize, but it's useful information for everyone here that thinks gas drilling is so great. We just couldn't live there anymore. These five-hundred-foot setbacks, nowhere near enough. The simple error on the driller's part, even, you know, an accident, everyone makes accidents, I do, that could easily spread more than five hundred feet. They had an occurrence in Clearfield, PA, last year. That was a two-mile radius evacuation when one fracking well went bad.
My name is Greg Schwartz. I'm a property owner and resident of Damascus, Pennsylvania, where I do in fact make my living from the land as a farmer. In Section seven-point-one of the draft regulations, the commission unequivocally states that your role is to maintain the quality and quantity of water throughout the entire basin, thus reinforcing the spirit and letter of the compact. In Section seven-point-one-D, quote, "The commission has determined that all natural gas development projects may have substantial effect on the water resources of the basin," end quote. You then express general principles in Section seven-point-one-E about what these regulations should be based on. For example, linking water quality and water quantity with the management of other resources, recognizing hydrological, ecological, social, and institutional systems within the regulatory regime, and most importantly, decision-making should be based on sound scientific principles and an understanding of the relationship between land and water resources. Then, through the regime proposed in Section seven-point-three through seven-point-six, you ignore these foundational principles. How can any of these regulations be measured against the standard of maintaining the quantity and quality of the water in the basin when no scientific evaluation of the cumulative impacts of high-volume slick water hydraulic fracturing has been conducted? This demonstrates the commission's disconnect between your purpose and your action. Although there are some requirements within these regulations that will help to protect our wallet quality, for example, the use of enclosed produced water storage tanks, in total, these regulations do not adequately address the broad impacts of a fully-developed Delaware River Basin gas field. I urge you to execute the cumulative impact study with a full lifecycle analysis of hydraulic fracturing before adopting regulations. The absence of funding for such a study is no excuse for not exercising diligence and satisfying your legal mandate. Thank you.
My name is Marion Swigover. I'm the executive director for the Northern Wayne Property Owners. Natural gas, particularly shale gas, can and will play a pivotal role in America's future energy supply. We are in favor of common-sense regulations that protect the environment while allowing for prudent exploration and production of gas, not just for us, but for all residents of Pennsylvania to enjoy. These goals are not mutually exclusive. They can and they must be a win-win combination. The DRBC should play an important role, and we thank them for releasing draft regulations. However, we oppose the vast and potential, all-encompassing authority that this draft places in the hands of the DRBC and the executive director. The DRBC offers no reason for intruding on what historically has been our state's domain. They take land-use controls in this draft. There are no time limits. The United States was not interested in dictatorships by which to govern. Neither are we. The landowners object to arbitrary power in the hands of the Delaware River Basin Commission, a bureaucratic agency. We would rewrite all of Section seven-five, believing that our state of Pennsylvania would maintain sovereign control and should maintain that over gas permitting and enforcement, with the DRBC serving as an interested party through legal memorandums of understanding or other binding agreement. Our states have the experience, they have the funding, and they are accountable to us, the voters. The DRBC lacks the expertise, the staff, and the experience to approve and enforce gas activity. The commission shall take on a role in the, with the state's permitting process to protect by requesting different standards prior to approvals. This would also allow the DRBC to appeal and challenge the state's decision if that's necessary. Keep our power home.
My name is Kurt Kokadrillian. I'm a landowner in northern Wayne County and an old family farm in Jefferson Township. I feel my rights are being stripped away by these proposed draft regulations. The DRBC's draft regs will overregulate the industry and stop it before it ever gets started. The DRBC will be shooting its own cash cow in the hoof in the form of Hess and Newfield, and be perplexed forever when they or any future companies pack up and leave the DRB. The way these are written will not allow a single well pad to be drilled within the basin due to vaguely-defined terms and setback requirements twenty times that of the National Park Service's twenty-five-foot stream buffer. That must change. The draft regs duplicate state efforts, take away Pennsylvania's autonomy over its own air, water, soil, and timber, and empowers the DRBC's regulatory authority to oversee land use for the first time in this state's history. That must stop. This strips away the rights of my property and local governments alike. PA has fifty-one percent of the landmass in the DRBC's domain, but only has one-fifth of a vote over its own destiny. These regs will take power from the state and put it into the hands of the DRBC, and that is not fair to Pennsylvanians. The DRBC's draft regs don't include the term "in conjunction with economic development", and that is clearly stated in its original charter. Does energy security away from Middle East politics and strife mean anything to anyone? South American countries practically fuel their own economies by natural gas, and why can't we do it here safely? Close to thirty-five percent of the Wayne Highlands and Western Wayne School Districts are on some sort of government assistance, and these jobs will help curtail rural poverty, the likes and speed of which is rarely seen. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Nguyen, and I've been a full-time resident in Wayne County since nineteen-seventy-nine. And I'd like to talk about global warming, national security, and the economy. We have a very real opportunity to take major action to reduce global warming by replacing petroleum in the nation's vehicles with liquefied natural gas, fuel that will produce far less carbon in the atmosphere, and by fueling our electric power plants with gas instead of coal, which adds the carbon in the atmosphere, or nuclear energy, which poses even greater potential for disaster. We know we're tainting the Earth's atmosphere and are already suffering the consequences. Have we become so fearful that we cannot take the obvious curative action? National security. Every time we put petroleum in our cars, we're not only polluting the atmosphere, we're sending our money to the very folks who funded the destruction of the World Trade Center, at least part of that money. And today, those same folks are supporting the Taliban. What nation in its right mind refuses to tap its own natural resources and prefers to fund its enemies? The economy. If we were not all paying three dollars and twenty-five cents per gallon for petroleum... If we were not all paying $3.25 per gallon for petroleum, but a dollar per gallon for liquefied natural gas for our cars, the saved money could get our economy out of recession, supply jobs, and enable a few more people to pay their mortgages and not lose their homes. Thank you.
My name is Peter Nguyen, and I own a home and land in Wayne County's Preston Township. The DRBC should abandon Section 7.5 of its proposed regulations and instead renegotiate in strengthening the memorandum of understanding it already has with the states of New York and Pennsylvania. After three years, the commission staff has been unable to come up with a workable set of regulations, and even if these rules were now revised, it would be foolhardy to leave the permitting process and rule enforcement to the DRBC, which now would have to create teams to carry out these functions, thereby guaranteeing that the work would be done by an inexperienced staff that likely would be underfunded and undersized in these tight budgetary times. This would be turning the principles of good regulation upside down. Section 7.5 would place an inexperienced DRB staff above the deeply experienced environmental protection staffs of states that have been dealing with gas and oil issues for many decades. Nor can the DRBC offer any justification for such an ill-advised plan. The agency would not have, for example, any high-quality or exceptional value waters to protect under its own special protection water program if Pennsylvania's regulatory regime were not functioning well already. Moreover, in its 2010 revision of the state's Chapter 102 Erosion and Sediment Control Regulations, Pennsylvania's DEP greatly tightened rules that long have been doing a good job, evidenced by the fact that stream quality in Wayne County has been improving each year for many years.
I'm Mike Uretzky, retired professor from NYU, where I directed the Center for Advanced Technology. I'm a full-time resident in Wayne County. I'm also serving on a federal commission regarding the energy futures. My comments supplement the considerable written and oral testimony you're receiving. The current draft regulations are defective. Taken as a whole, they're based on bad assumptions, and they do not reflect the geology and current industry practices. Taken as a whole, they violate the compact establishing, DRBC. The analyses leading to these regulations are simply wrong. They duplicate already existing regulations in the states that are already satisfactory and that already have a good enforcement mechanism. Duplication at the very time when the country is searching for added efficiencies and cost reductions to improve the economy. The proposed fees are unnecessary if you rely on the work that's already been done and they unnecessarily add to the cost of government. Not only is the added regulatory layer unnecessary, it will get in the way of further practice and energy improvements, the improvements that will make gas exploration even more environmentally sound than it already is. The proposed regulations are just an invitation to endless legal cases and circuses. In summary, they work against the best interest of the citizens, the community, the state, and the country. These regulations deserve a gentleman's C at best. Go back, fix the drafts, and these fixes can be done relatively quickly because the data exists, the resources exist, and good studies from places like MIT and the National Academy of Sciences already exist. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Arundell. My family is a landowner in Damascus Township. There's too short a comment period and way too few hearings. The draft regulations are not based on science, do not address cumulative impacts, do not set limits on gas development, do not institute high enough standards to protect streams and communities, and rely heavily on flawed state regulations that are filled with exemptions and loopholes. The commission has not established any enforcement capabilities. These regulations do not even look at compressors, dehydrators, processing facilities, and other off-the-drill pad replacements. The mandate of the DRBC is to prevent degradation of the exceptional water quality of the Delaware River, not to mitigate damages. To allow this activity as an economic benefit is shortsighted and wrong. By not looking at impacts to human health, communities, and to existing businesses is to deny the evidence of what drilling with hydraulic fracturing has done in other places. Why would results be different here? A quote from Arkansas. Van Buren County, along with neighboring counties, is in the heart of the Fayetteville shale play. They call it the sweet spot. And yet, we can see from these statistics from the USDA, unemployment figures have risen in Van Buren in the five years the gas companies have been boasting about how many jobs they have brought to the area. We have a population in this sacrifice zone who have been crying out for anyone in government to listen to their sometimes desperate situations to no avail. Water contamination, earthquakes, air choked with toxins, compressor stations that roar 24/7 at such a high level people can't sleep are just some of the problems. Some in government say all these problems are worth it because of this great economic boon the gas industry is bringing us. I say, what boon? End quote. These DRBC-proposed rules will not make drilling safe, will allow water resources to be depleted, water quality and ecosystems to degrade.
My name is Jane Prittman, Honesdale, Pennsylvania. First, two points. If a tree falls in the forest, how will we know? If a leaseholder's water is ruined by gas drilling and they are silenced from telling people by a confidentiality agreement or intimidated by fear to lose their gas royalties, the media and general public are not getting the facts about how much drinking water is really being ruined by drilling. There's reason to believe such confidentiality agreements are illegal, and I urge the DRBC to look into this and investigate it for your own decision-making. Second, the DRBC is not required by its compact to order cumulative impact studies, but this is not a legal question so much as a moral question, and here's why. By not ordering full lifecycle cumulative impact studies before finalizing your rules and allowing drilling to begin, the DRBC is failing to exercise due diligence. This, rationally speaking, is negligence in the face of so much evident risk. Comprehensive studies are needed before drilling, not merely to assess potential harms, but in your duty to protect this special river basin, reach to a higher standard, to exercise your burden of proof according to the precautionary principle and assertively prove that drilling is safe. Send the bill to the drillers. If there's no money for studies, then there's no drilling. Let science, not politics, inform your decision, and meanwhile, ban all drilling in the Delaware River watershed while we're waiting for proof that drilling is safe. Thank you.
My name is David Jones, local resident and tourism industry business owner. The problem with these new regulations is that it's going to basically stop drilling in the entire DRBC. Now, Carol, you stopped and visited my mom a couple years ago and told me at her kitchen table that you were not trying to stop gas drilling, you simply wanted to know where the water was coming from, where it was going, and make sure that things were done right. And I believe you intend to do that, but prove it to us by adopting regulations that will not stop gas drilling in the basin, because these will. These will scare away the gas companies. They're excessive, extremely excessive. Simply stick with the state regulations and focus on water withdrawal and discharge. If this industry goes away, it will do far more harm to this basin. We desperately need the economy, the jobs, the economic development that gas drilling will bring. And being in the tourism industry, with the price of oil today nearly $100 a barrel and certainly higher in the future, we will not have a tourism industry if we can't get people here with reasonable fuel costs. We all consume these resources, and I fear that down the road, this is going to become a barren, depressed area even worse than now. And that might be okay to some people, but it's not okay to me, and it's not okay to the people here who deserve the same opportunity that the lower basin or New York City people deserve. This is our water, our river, our economy. Please don't take this away. Please adopt reasonable regulations, and please allow this to continue in a timely manner and not allow the tactic of delay to stop this drilling. Carol, I trust that you will move this along quickly. Thank you very much.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Deragon. I live in Abramsville, PA, and we're basically asking you to revise your regulations to defer to the states. DRBC regulation of any water use for gas, regardless of the amount, is discriminatory and works against the economic interests of the upper Delaware region. The amount of water used involved in gas drilling is small compared to other industries, for example, car washes and power plants and big city commercial uses. Reducing the regulatory threshold from the normal 100,000 gallons per day to any amount of water is not supported by the data. The DRBC's assertion that normal thresholds do not adequately protect water resources and its suggestion that other uses don't consume water in a like manner are both disingenuous. Other users, such as power plants, consume far greater quantities of water. Moreover, if water quality and safety are already heavily regulated by the states and water allocation's not the issue, exactly why is it we need the DRBC? Regulations should be revised to defer to the states.
My name is Tom Riley. I'm a civil engineer registered in Pennsylvania and New York and president of Riley Engineering Environmental and Surveying. I have over 25 years' experience working with the land and waters in the upper Delaware River Basin. I applied in full detail both the DRBC proposed pad development regulations and existing DEP pad regulations to a 1,000-acre tract in Northern Wayne County that is typical of the upper Delaware topography, that is hills and valleys with many small watercourses, ponds, and wetlands. DRBC 500-foot wetland setbacks would force pad development away from valleys onto wooded hilltops, requiring long access roads. DEP's 100-foot temporary and 150-foot permanent setbacks would allow development in locations with flatter slopes closer to existing roads and often not forested, reducing total land and forest disturbance significantly. PA and New York environmental agencies have some of the strictest stormwater rules and most experienced regulatory staffs in the country. The states have developed science-based, best-management practices and have extensively trained review staffs that should take the lead in rulemaking, permitting, and enforcement. Pad development regulations should remain in the states where the most experience resides. The pad approval by rule and natural gas development plans proposed are not practical. Based on the topography, virtually zero land would be eligible for the approval by rule. The development plan process is conceived to promote thoughtful master planning of pads, pipelines, and access. However, until substantially more exploratory drilling is advanced, there will be little real basis for the exercise except to slow down or stop the development. Keep the rules for management of water consumption and wastewater discharge. Leave pad regulation to the states of Pennsylvania and New York.
My name is Rick Wagel. I'm from Damascus, Pennsylvania. I was born in and graduated from Honesdale. My family moved away when I was fairly young, searching for a better life. My heart never left this area. Many of my school years were spent in Florida, but all my summers were spent here with my grandparents and the land that I love. At 16, I moved back with plans on living here forever. Then again, at 23, I left again, this time to join the army. Partly in search for adventure, but mainly because I am proud of my country and believe in fighting for our land. My sister, my father, and my grandfather also served our country to protect our way of life. My family's owned property in Wayne County since early 1800s. The land, forest, water have always been clean and protected. I intend to keep it that way. If I had any doubt that gas drilling would change that, I would not be standing here to support it today. This area needs a fresh start. This is a chance to bring our economy back. The gas drilling employs my mother, two of my sisters, my brother-in-law, and his brother, each of them from this county. Five people in my family will be looking for work if you deny gas drilling in this area, not to mention the restaurants, stores, gas stations, contractors, and so on that they support. This leads to dozens, if not hundreds, of people affected by my family alone. The DBRC has drugged their feet for too long, and they're trying to take over our land. Well, I say this is our land. We have worked and protected it with our own blood, sweat, and tears. As long as we and the gas companies abide by state and federal regulations, no one should be able to tell us what we can do with our property. Please support gas drilling in our area. My family and yours depends on it. Thank you. God bless America.
My name is Josh Fox, and I'm a resident of Wayne County. I have documented in my film, as I have documented in my film, Gas Land, the natural gas industry is out of control, entirely deregulated at the federal level, and is causing thousands upon thousands of incidents of contamination across the United States. On the ground, this industry is sloppy, bullying, aggressive, and dangerous. On the airwaves and in the halls of Washington DC, Harrisburg, Albany, and I'm sure in your focus group, they are slick, charismatic, and well-spoken. However, their entire business is based on a lie, the lie that it is okay to live in an area where the massive industrial development of hydraulic fracturing is taking place. As my neighbor Carl attested to before, he said he had to move while they were drilling one well. It is not safe to live within the areas where this drilling is occurring. With your draft regulations, you are signing the death warrant of the Delaware River. The DRBC needs to do a cumulative impact study before any regulations are to occur. The second great lie that this industry tells is that it does not affect water quality. We also know that that is not true. We have seen thousands of cases of documented contamination that Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, I could go on and on. All of this leads me to the great lie of the regulator, the lie that this industry can be regulated. With no enforcement and no real legal ability to control this industry, they have proved time and time again their ability to go around any regulation. The act of draft regulation itself is a farce. If you allow 20,000 gas wells by the industry's own rate of failure, which is 2% to 5%, you will see between hundreds and thousands of irreversible contamination incidents, causing thousands of square miles of permanent damage to the watershed. If you can live with that, if that is what regulation means, then that is what I'm saying, the death warrant of the Delaware River. Thank you.
I'm Wes Gillingham. I'm the program director for Catskill Mountain Keeper. I thank you for taking on this monumental task of trying to protect this irreplaceable resource. I'm here today to urge the DRBC. We have testified in the past that allowing these rules to go forward without a cumulative impact, without complete review, and without complete science should not happen. There is a need to show that what a full build-out looks like and evaluate the direct effects. This has not happened. Your presentation on the number of wells and well pads clearly stated this does not include vertical wells. The history of gas drilling in the United States shows that a full build-out includes horizontal and vertical wells and downspacing. Shale gas development is an industrialization of the landscape. The proposed regs do not adequately address this. You are proposing a permitting system to allow gas drilling to proceed without complete science. It has been clearly shown by documented agency actions and science, there are serious problems in Pennsylvania and across the United States with shale gas extraction. I quote from a hydrogeologist who is a recognized expert on subsurface contamination. Fracturing by injecting fluids into the shale will cause conditions that make transport of contaminants from the shale to surface aquifers possible. The theory promoted by the gas industry and regurgitated by those who believe the gas company and their lies, as Josh said, that contaminants in the shale are isolated is simply not true. The truth hurts, and the truth hurts communities, our health, our resources. It's not about the economy. It's about our water and our lives. It's about our water and our livelihood. This transport of contaminants may take decades or more depending on the conditions, but it will occur much more quickly when they reach a place of preferential flow.
Hello, I'm Mark Ruffalo, and I am a resident of Calicoon. If there are no problems with gas drilling, how come there are so many problems with gas drilling? Now, this industry cannot police itself. It's been, has had a failure of policing itself. A thousand incidences of infractions and regulations here in PA over the past year. The DRBC states that its oversight regimen will be supported by the voluntary reporting of violations by project sponsors? We are not at all comfortable with an industry, with this industry policing itself, especially given the extractive industry's long historical record of adhering, of adhering to best practices and environmental and human health safeguards only if enforced by specific regulations and regulators. Now, the recent allegations by congressional investigators that oil and gas companies injected tens of millions of gallons of diesel fuel into, into onshore fracking wells, an apparent violation of the Safe Water Drinking Act, and then after signing an agreement of intent, it is case in point. Even if you allow for the industry claim that the EPA never properly developed rules and procedures to regulate the use of diesel in fracking despite a clear grant of authority from Congress, end quote, such an admission shows that the industry knew very clearly what the will of the people was, and they chose to ignore it. Now, this is endemic. And instead of, and instead they use technicalities to justify their continued underground injection of a highly toxic and polluting substance. Now, you guys don't have the regulators to carry out these regulations right now, nor do the states. The only thing to do right now is to ban this until an EPA study can show if it's safe or not.
My name is Joe Levine. I'm a property owner in Mylinville. Regulations for shale gas fracking must be based on a cumulative impact study. These regulations cannot make drilling safe. This is proven by what is happening in Pennsylvania. Fracking is intrinsically contaminating. It is not old and proven. There are no reports that can conclude this is safe. The dominant elements of the hearing record are the Hazen and Sawyer Report, the New York State Watershed Inspector General's Report, and no less than eight other reports submitted to the commission. All of these reports say that the technology is not safe, and therefore you cannot allow it, and it must be banned until it is proven that it can be done safely. Even the industry's own Society of Petroleum Engineers says that there are substantial risks from failures and accidents in all aspects of the drilling process. The rate of accident or failures exceeds 1% by all reports. That means that if there are 20,000 wells, there will be 200 accidents and failures. What will we do when our aquifers are contaminated like Dimmock? If you examine the record of shale gas fracking, it poses too many risks to the basin's resources to be allowed. There is no substantial evidence on the hearing record over the past three years that refutes that conclusion. Consequently, any rule authorizing shale gas fracking anywhere in the basin fails for being arbitrary and capricious and unsupported by the record. Do a cumulative impact study first, and be sure you exercise the precautionary principle, which is the responsibility of this commission. Natural gas is not clean. It's not American. These acres are already owned by foreign interests and multinationals. Thank you.
My name is Ann Backlund. My husband and I own a campground on the Delaware River in Equinock, PA, which is in the headwaters of the Delaware River Basin Commission. I'm also a member of the NWPOA, and I'm not very proud of that. I regret, will gratefully say that I let others do my homework for me. People who I thought cared about our water and air and told us that they were working on an ironclad lease with the gas companies like no other. Since then, I've been horribly aware that there is no such thing as an ironclad lease. I was also very naive in believing that the Delaware River would always be protected as it is the water supply for 15 million people downstream, not counting all the people that live and work in the basin. Right now, the oil and gas industry is exempt from the Clean Air and Water Act. It is ludicrous to think that the DRBC can issue regulations on an industry that is exempt from regulations that all other industry is subject to. I do applaud the DRBC's effort to draft regulations, but the better time to draft such regulations would be after the frac act is passed, which would have the oil and gas industry be subject to the Clean Air and Water Act, and the EPA studies are complete. The gas will wait. It's not going anywhere. We're talking about very serious consequences if we allow gas drilling to be done in a way that could potentially harm our air and water. The facts are out there in the news every day about accidents and contamination from hydrofracking. The DRBC's mission is to provide comprehensive watershed with programs to include water quality protection. I urge you to base your regulations on facts that will be revealed when the cumulative studies are complete and the industry is subject to the Clean Air and Water Act. The decisions that we make today will affect all future generations. It will be our legacy. I'd like to read a quote from, that was written by Russell Means, by walking the red road. "One is expected to know things."
Hi, my name is Dustin Hall from Proton here in Wayne County. In May, I'll be graduating from Lackeyona College with a two-year degree in natural gas technologies. I've spent two years going to college hoping to get a gas, or a job in this area. This summer, I also did a internship in western Pennsylvania, in Clearfield County. Western Pennsylvania was where the first oil well was, was ever drilled. There, on my job, I, I worked on a, on a well that was over 60 years old that was hydraulically fracked, fractured 60 years ago. So this is not a new process. Anywhere in the country or in the state, even the, this well was still producing gas. Even though gas drilling is new here, gas drilling is not new in Pennsylvania. Laws have been in place for a long time from many agencies. I believe in regulations, but we have them. We all use fuels for heat and energy. Where does it come from? Other parts of the country and overseas. It's not fair to them. Not, not wanting gas drilling here is simply a case of not in my backyard. You cannot have gas without gas drilling. So like I said, the regulations are already in place, so let the gas companies draw for the gas that we all need.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ned Lang. I employ 30 people in Narrowsburg, New York. When I came out of the service in 1983, I bought 256 acres contiguous to the Delaware River. It's about a mile of riverfront. And I also own a farm in Pleasant Mount, Pennsylvania. Half of it is in the SRBC, and the other half is in the DRBC, thankfully. I was born and raised on a dairy farm in Wayne County, Pennsylvania. I watched and, when asked, helped my parents tend to fields, cows, goats, sheep, from season to season as, as I grew up. I joined the Wayne County 4H and learned what it meant to nurture the land in order to grow animals that were of premier quality and health. Throughout my past 50 years, I've learned how hard it is to remain a farming family and a stakeholder with excess of 10 acres of land or more in spite of growing taxes, dwindling revenues, or succumbing to the prospects of subdividing. In order to be a stakeholder, you must love the land and its virtues, as I do. Whom better to decide its fates, its fate and the possibilities of gas drilling when done in an environmentally conscious manner, as has been done throughout Pennsylvania many thousands of times as a result of an industry who knows the consequences of not fulfilling best practices and good protocol? The DRBC has an obligation to work within current regulations that already protect the water that runs both above and below my land. These, these regulations are reasonable, allowing the gas industries to work within standards that are realistic and not overly burdensome. There are many states from Texas through Pennsylvania that have laws which protect the environment and allow the industry to work with the landowners, local and state governments, allowing the valuable natural gas resource to be harvested. We must move forward as a community, as a state, and most importantly, as a country with a culture that is sustainable, supplying our energy and economic needs from within, which most importantly is not currently this country's modus operandi. Thank you.
My name is James Barth. I'm research coordinator for Damascus citizens. My wife and I have owned 25 acres in Beach Lake for 22 years. We have invested over 200,000 hard-earned dollars in savings into our home and property, and we pay nearly $4,000 per year in property taxes. None of this is relevant to your responsibility and purpose, which is spelled out in your section 7.1A. I could say about my 170-year history, my family's in the country, and my fall of the service in World War II, but I'll forego that. The purpose of this article is to protect the water resources of the Delaware River Basin during the construction and operation of natural gas projects. Unfortunately, you follow that with words such as reduce or mitigate depletion and degradation of the surface and groundwater resources. That is an admission of failure to the purpose which you earlier stated. Reduction and mitigation of degradation is not protecting, is not preventing. This recipe for failure was set in motion by the commissioners when they, when you did not require a cumulative environmental impact study and risk assessment. There are a couple of points, I'm going to submit my extensive written comments, but there are a couple of points that maybe is a good thing to mention while I'm speaking. One is there should not be any centralized waste pits allowed in the Delaware River Basin. That is just insane. There's plenty of examples out west in Washington County, Stephanie Halliwell, and others to look into. The other is that there should be no approval by rule in any watershed that drains directly into the Delaware River or sub watershed. I'm not sure how you categorize that. You do state in your 7.5 E6 that such ABRs are not allowed in watersheds that drain into the New York City reservoir basin, and 3.37 million people in 119 municipalities are served by those watersheds draining directly into the, thank you very much.
I'm Elizabeth Tatham, and I have grave concerns about some of the proposed regulations. Number one, there won't be enough fresh water for current uses, especially with gas companies drilling their own wells and being allowed to export it for gas drilling outside our basin, besides the billions of gallons needed here. The federal government has recommended not using sewer plants for flowback disposal because many of the toxins can't be removed, just diluted, and people have gotten sick from drinking that water. And some have gone on bottled water, but they still have to shower and cook with it. Please don't allow it here. Another problem, deep injection wells, which are approved in these regulations. They have been linked to earthquakes in Oklahoma, West Virginia, Texas, and Arkansas. In Arkansas, near a deep waste well, earthquakes occur daily. Please don't allow them here. There are many people in New Jersey, Delaware, and South Pennsylvania who have no idea they could have gas drilling in their own community, in fact, in their own backyard if these regulations are approved. I believe it is the DRBC's responsibility to publicize the names and locations of the other shale formations so affected people can study the issues and then have their voices heard too. This is only fair, and it is necessary. A cumulative impact study was approved by you, the DRBC, and it was approved until regu, and it was approved to be in effect, and the regulations were to, to wait until that study was done. Well, what happened to that? Why are we not waiting for the EPA study or another study to show the way?
My name is Mary Chiroki, and I'm from Chester County in southern part of the state. The DRBC was formed 50 years ago to protect the waters of the Delaware Basin, Delaware River Basin, and their mission has never been more critical than it is now. We have the record of hydraulic fracturing in other parts of the country to warn us, as well as incidents here right in Pennsylvania to raise a red flag as to the dangers resultant from this kind of drilling. Many people in the areas that have been drilled have lost their wells, experienced illness, and have had to suffer from loss of clean water and clean air. The components of fracking fluids have not all even been revealed, let alone studied, but we do know that many of them are dangerous to our health. We need more time to study these health effects. What is decided right now in Pennsylvania will affect everyone in Pennsylvania for generations. We cannot rush into decisions that can result in irreversible damage to not only our water, but our agriculture, tourism, and the health of our children. The gas companies, many of them from outside of the United States, will leave Pennsylvania, and they will leave. They will leave us with contaminated water, methane in our air, and health problems. With something as critical at stake as our water, isn't any time necessary to complete an authentic, an autho, an authentic study too much to ask. The gas companies have shown time after time that they cannot regulate themselves, and we, the people, have been the losers. We will foot the bill for health-related problems, damaged infrastructure, and the loss of vital aspects of our economy. The DRBC has the mission and the responsibility to protect the waters of the Delaware River and to have not a short-sighted view of this task, but to look to the future of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
My name is Lee Woodmansey, and I grew up in Buckingham Township, where the main stem of the Delaware starts. I own land there, and I now live in New York, Pennsylvania, because I couldn't find a job in Wayne County. I demand this from the state of Pennsylvania where I live. Strong regulations, proper inspections, proper handling of fracking water, and proper scientific research. I agree with the National Sierra Club, that natural gas is the best bridge fuel to get us to the green power of the future. I'm also a landowner, and my land is leased to Hess Newfield. I believe that science, not hysteria, should be used to make decisions regarding drilling. That is why I want the commission to get out of the regulation business and let the state of Pennsylvania, where we pay our taxes, to regulate the land and water of the entire state. These draft regulations show that the commission is unable to investigate the question, understand the people and land of the basin, or be aware of the real problems with gas production. Here are just a few commission errors. Not understanding that the people of Wayne County are a resource and have value. Assuming that gas drilling in the basin has a lifetime of only 10 to 20 years, when gas will be produced from Marcellus for more than 100 years. Assuming that every acre with Marcellus shale somewhere under it will produce a lot of gas despite what geologists say. Assuming that it takes 5 million gallons of fresh water to frac every well, while ignoring its own statements that there will be water recycling. Assuming that forest fragmentation is a problem when in Wayne County alone, nearly 1,000 acres of forest is being created every year. Not understanding that crows used to be the biggest problem for local horn farmers, and now it's bears. We have bobcats, wild cats, mountain lions running as over in Canada. Fragmentation is not a problem. Not being worried that the city of New York has leaky aqueducts and wastes 37 million gallons of river water every single day, and the commission's reaction to this is absolutely nothing. Not understanding that we should actually require well pads to be built in woods so that agricultural land is preserved. I conclude by asking you to believe in science, vaccinate your kids, and use science to make decisions in drilling. Thank you.
I'm Tom Yatsavsky. I'm from Lake Ariel. Dear DRBC members and fellow citizens, I'm here to ask the DRBC to continue to impose its moratorium on natural gas production until comprehensive cumulative environmental impact studies can be implemented, reviewed, and thoroughly evaluated by the EPA, the USGS, and the New York DEC. The safety of millions of people and the environment are in jeopardy here if this massive industrialization proceeds without these scientific analyses. Dangerous, non-biodegradable fracking chemicals are known to be harmful to humans and irreversibly detrimental to the environment. Once in the ground or water, they do not just magically disappear. So-called safe drilling is oxymoronic. So-called safe drilling is oxymoronic. There are only degrees of chemical contamination, since the gas companies use nearly 600 toxic chemicals and 900 products. Gas drilling is intrinsically intoxicating and cannot be made safe. Everywhere that gas drilling has occurred, there have been negative environmental impacts. There has been, and there will be more subsurface and above-ground migration of these chemicals into pristine waters. The salty, chemically-laden-produced water is radioactive, with toxic uranium, radium, strontium, barium, mercury, arsenic, and other elements coming back from deep underground. Waste treatment facilities are unable to properly treat this dangerous chemical, radioactive brew, and will end up discharging these, discharging these poisons back into our rivers, which in many cases are also drinking water supplies. They cannot filter out certain chemicals like glycol ethers, which are tasteless and odorless and dissolve the filter's membrane. Glycol ethers are known carcinogens, cause testicular toxicity, embryo malformation, bone marrow depression, and destruction of red blood cells. Glycol ethers are used in the initial hydraulic fracturing and throughout the life of the gas well as an antifreeze. Please wait for the science. Thank you.
Sandra Davis, Delaware County. We are a struggling family in upstate New York. My husband and I are trying to survive in a small community. We have ventured into several businesses which have failed to thrive and seen many other businesses in our community close their doors due to the struggling economy. There are no jobs here. People are leaving the area to find work. We are already one of the highest taxed states, and now you are trying to pass regulations that will make it even harder to do business here. Our area has been harvesting natural resources safely for many years, such as logging, stone quarries, and using land for farming. We take our jobs very seriously. Most of us are hunters and fishermen, and all of us are environmentalists. We need our natural resources, and for many of us, it is our livelihood. These regulations will hurt the small natural resource-based businesses in New York, which in turn affects everyone who works, lives, and tries to survive in these communities. The, the, the concerns of those downstream seem to supersede those of the taxpayers and residents who actually live here. The majority of us want the jobs and the economical stability that drilling will bring. We cannot keep our area alive without it. I assure you, this area's population will dwindle if these regulations go through. Many people, including myself, will not be able to pay the higher taxes and keep our land. We need to be able to use our natural resources. Natural gas drilling is already safely taking place across the river in Pennsylvania. Why can't we establish regulations similar to theirs? What is the sense in duplicating state regulations, and why is the DRBC taking it upon itself to regulate land use? We have been waiting three painful years for the DRBC to develop its regulations, and this is what we get: repetitive regulations that eliminate 90, over 90% of New York. This is not satisfactory. Why should New York landowners have to suffer? I ask you to please revise the regulations and give New York a chance to drill safely. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Hiller, owner of Trackside Grill and lifelong resident of Wayne County. At one time, Honesdale had the largest stockpile of coal in the world. The town got started in the 1820s because of Morris and William Wirtz's coal business. By, by the mid-19th century, Honesdale was a bustling waterfront town. Growing up on a farm in Wayne County, a century later, I have witnessed firsthand the life that farmers and others in the local workforce lead in order to survive with the coming and going of industry on the local level. American rope factory, more business forms, chromatube, many of which utilize the railroad to transport both product to and from their facility. Opportunities that have been suppressed by the DRBC could be the next economic development phase for the local area. How ironic is it that another natural resource could be our saving grace? My question is, what if the coal business was shut down the way the DRBC wants to shut us down now? Where would we be today? Where will we be tomorrow? The proposed over-the-top DRBC regulations affect much more than gas drilling operations. They would also affect farming, logging operations, tourism, and God knows what else. Tourism has a huge impact on local economy also. Thanks to many things, the charm of a picturesque town, historic sites, and the train, and much more. The storage line itself attracted close to 9,000 passengers to our visitor center last year alone. Our hopes to increase that number of visitors are significantly stifled without the train. The development of natural gas industry would put the local economy and the railroad on track for a brighter future. Without it, the lonesome whistle may blow for the last time, and the train as we know it will die, ironically, in the place of its birth. I'm here because I give a hoot about our historic past and future.
Good afternoon, my name is Daniel Schaefer from Deposit in New York. The proposed restrictions by the DRBC are redundant and unnecessary. These new restrictions stifle job and economic growth in our local communities. The 500-foot buffer zone is excessive, and the definition is all-inclusive. This restriction will render most of the land unusable for drilling. This concerns me because of the possibility those regulations spilling over to other already well-regulated industries. The current buffer zone for clearing is 50 feet from any stream in New York. This regulation has been in place and has worked for years. If this 500-foot regulation is enforced in other industries, thousands of local residents who are lucky enough to have jobs will be impacted, from the forest industry to the sawmills to the end-users of all the natural resources in our regions. Without the ability to drill and help our economic growth, many of our large, family-owned tract's land will not be able to be passed from one generation to the other as they have for years past. We need more jobs, more economic growth, and more opportunities, not more redundant regulations.
Good afternoon, my name is John Han. I live in Sheehole, Pennsylvania. I'm on the Pike County Marcellus Shale Task Force. And I was reading your 83 pages of regulations, and when I got to page, I think it was 43, about the 500-foot setback, I, I, I'm just appalled that everybody here thinks that 500 feet is, is excessive. I've heard excessive 20 times today, and I'm, and I'm appalled at that. Because 500 feet is nothing. This gentleman here just said 50 feet. I said 50 feet from the river with a, with an oil well, with contaminated water, you know, in a pond that could possibly leak? What about flooding? You know, it's going to destroy our, our tourist industry and our recreational industry. I, I was at the Zane Gray Museum. Are you familiar with the Zane Gray? Okay. I, I, I took pictures of it from the edge of the water to the back of the Zane Gray Museum. And 500 feet is, is nothing. I mean, it's, you know, to me, five miles is what the setback should be. I mean, come on. 500 feet is, is ridiculous. Also, the river is listed as an endangered river as of last year because of this impinging well drilling. I think there should be a moratorium on, you know, until everything, all the environmental impacts studies are in. You should be good stewards of the land. That's what you're, you're set out to do. I just checked with the DEP this morning, and I got it from the horse's mouth. Last year, there were 721 violations due to drillers, due to leakage and oversights, and probably over a million dollars' worth of fines levied against the oil companies and gas companies.
Hello, my name is John Guthrie. I'm a Pike County landowner near Canidensis. I have one simple proposition, and that is that the regulations should be expanded to include more rigorous, independent testing of the surface and groundwater than the current proposal includes. Gas drilling deposits toxins into all water, aquifers, rivers, and streams. These toxins include barium, strontium, other carcinogens. The water pollution has been established scientifically and not denied by any of the gas drilling industry. These toxins threaten our health, property values, tourism. I want to be able to drink my water in the future. I want to be able to swim in my lake in the future. I suggest what we need is more, more assurance about safety. To guard against these threats, we have to test the level of the toxins much more fully than the current proposals recommend. At present, the monitoring and testing is completely unsatisfactory. There are documented reports of counties and states that have lost data. Companies fail to report substantial amounts of information, and inaccurate analyses by incompetent laboratories are appearing in many places. So the current regulations are too weak. The current regulations rely on the gas drillers to collect, analyze, and report data and give their findings to the commission. No person believes the gas companies will monitor themselves sufficiently. Their safety, their interests, their longevity are not at stake. Their best interests are served by no testing. We have to strengthen the aquifer testing requirements by stating who, what, when, how, and why the comprehensive testing will occur. So the commission needs independent testing for the aquifers.
Does anyone have card number 72? Come out now. Number 72, or also card number 75.
Apparently, everybody is getting sore and tired the same way I was. My name is Judith Ladonis. I'm vice chair of East Allen Township, North Hampton County Board of Supervisors. I'm not necessarily here representing their points of view, my own. I'm here as a mother and a citizen concerned with water quality for now and the future. Water is the planet's life's blood. When I was in high school some years ago, we learned of a simple process called osmosis. Since that principle of science hasn't really changed, my concern is that the chemicals and, and other things used in fracking water, be it vertical drilling or whatever, will enter the ecosystem. And certainly, there's enough evidence being presented today that shows this. And I've also heard some, some folks stating that the wells are so deep there's no chance existing for that to happen. No chance, sorry, my skepticism does come through. I'm trying to keep this a little bit shorter because, as I said, I, I recognize what it's like to sit through four or five hours of this. We are global, we are linked together, and whether I am at the headwaters or the end result, which the end result could be China of this simply because of the way things flow, from the river to the bays to the oceans, and we are not alone. We are not. We are stewards of this land. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to present this point of view. I applaud strict regulations if it, if it seems that that is going to keep my children, my grandchildren, my great-grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren safe. Make sure regulations are enforced, and the industry cannot regulate itself, nor should they police themselves. That needs to be an outside body. I want to also state that approval by rule... Oh, already? Thank you.
How you doing? Thank you. My name is Brian Fox. I was born and raised in South Canton Township on my family's farm. A few years after college, I returned to this area and now make my living as a, as a farmer. I love it here, I'm part of this land, and this land is part of me. As a farmer, I cannot take the risk of having my well water contaminated. Not only would this threaten my family's health and well-being, but it would likely have to shut down the farm. While some people are maybe willing to risk, take the risk of contaminating their drinking water, perhaps assuming the gas company will pay to ship in water in plastic barrels, I cannot take this risk. As a farmer, I depend on clean well water to irrigate my crops as well as wash my produce for market. I need to provide clean water to my animals and my herd of beef cattle, which can drink up to 40 gallons each per day. Unless the gas companies are forced to reveal what chemicals they are using, and toxic chemicals and diesel fuel are prohibited from being used, hydraulic fracturing should not be permitted in our region. The industry cannot be allowed to police itself. There have been thousands of cases of well water contamination in other parts of the country, and even in nearby dummick, but the gas company, companies want to, want you to, want you to prove how something like benzene or diesel fuel got into your water. Their policy is to deny, deny, deny. The drilling moratorium should remain in place until the EPA completes the study of hydraulic fracturing in 2012, or until hydraulic fracturing is subject to the Safe Drinking Water Act through passage of the Frac Act. Once our water is poisoned, it cannot be cleaned up. We need to proceed with great caution, and there are adequate safeguards in regulations that prohibit the use of chemicals that would poison our groundwater. I urge my neighbors to focus on the long-term goals of maintaining our rural, rural lifestyle and rebuilding our local food systems, instead of being tempted by the short-term profits that will likely destroy our community. No good has ever come from easy money. Thank you.
My name is Don Frank. I'm an retired senior engineer at IBM. I live in Susquehanna County, Brackney, on Quaker Lake. I was part of a committee to look at leasing our 450 acres as a not-for-profit. And as a result of that, we signed a gas lease. We restricted drilling in certain areas. We obtained a million three upfront for a not-for-profit, a lot of money, and we estimated our royalty revenue to be $40 million to $80 million over 20 years. So it's not chicken feed anybody. The USA is spending a billion dollars a day on the Middle East, and the despots there want to kill us, and they want to get rid of Western civilization. So I would say that whatever we, way we can to get ourselves independent of that is important. And that would include the Anwar in Alaska, the Bakken Field in Montana, and our own natural gas in, in this area. The, I live in Susquehanna County. If you go down to Montrose, you see the houses painted. It's hard to find a place to, to rent down there for workers that live in the area and have come into the area, and the place is flourishing. And as part of the Susquehanna River Basin, it's been very well-run. The DEP does a fine job, and my suggestion is to adopt the rules that the Susquehanna River Basin has, and, and don't delay doing it because you have a lot of opportunity to improve things. Not only that, but Brazil uses natural gas for their automobiles. It would give Detroit something to do to build automobiles for natural gas and get themselves unhooked from imports of oil and gas and automobiles as well. Thank you.
Thank you for this time. My name is David Nelson. I live in Rollins, PA, right off of the Lexuax River, the only place I know of where eagles still reside in Pennsylvania. And 25 miles from this, auditorium stands a building called Gray's Towers, the home of one of America's greatest conservationists, Gifford Pichot, a man who recognized that our natural resources are finite and deserve protection. His ideas are timeless, but I'm afraid that we are letting them fall by the wayside when we consider opening our Delaware River Basin to the destruction of natural gas exploration. We are here today to outline regulations to protect our water resources during the construction and operation of natural gas development projects. However, I believe it's premature to create these rules when much about fracting, fracking's environmental impact is still unknown. For example, it was only recently that drilling companies disclosed some of the ingredients in the fracking fluid. The EPA under Obama is still finally undertaking a new review of fracking, but that report is not expected to be completed until the end of 2012. We cannot allow natural gas development to proceed without being aware of all the risks involved, and these are significant, long-term risks. For now, a recent DEP study concluded that based on current science and technology, hydro fracking is not compatible with maintaining the water quality that millions of people rely on, and should not be allowed in the watershed. We may be tempted to allow fracking to move ahead, with promises of financial gains and independence from foreign oil, but these are short-sighted gains when considering all that's at stake. We could lose valuable recreation spaces and tourism income from the Delaware River Basin areas. The Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area is within a day's drive of 60 million people. There was 4.4 million visitors to Delaware Water Gap, compared to the only 3.4 million visitors in Yellowstone National Park. Frack waste traveling downstream to New York City offer would endanger the health and well-being of millions of citizens. Well, I'm out.
Good afternoon, my name is Allison Carney. I'm from Holly, PA. The right to clean water is one that we Americans tend to take for granted. We can be confident that the water we drink, bathe in, sprinkle on our crops, give to our animals, and use in our households is pure and clean, can't we? Isn't it only the third-world countries that have to cope with contaminated water? Well, that may be the future of our communities here in Wing County if we allow natural gas companies to exploit our fragile... gas companies to exploit our fragile watershed for financial and political gains. Hydraulic fracturing is inherently destructive and cannot be regulated safely, let alone by the industry itself. Today, the Delaware River is one of the cleanest rivers in the United States, but pollution from industry and urbanization has taken its toll on these waters since the 1770s. By the 1940s, chemical waste had fouled the river so badly that no fish could survive in its oxygen-depleted waters. Cleanup efforts had failed. Finally, in 1972, the DRBC received 100, or $1 billion in federal grants, and the river began its dramatic comeback. However, natural gas exploration poses a real risk to these hard-won advances. Protecting the water resources of the Delaware River Basin and natural gas development are mutually exclusive. At least half of the chemicals known to be present in fracking fluid are toxic. Many of them are carcinogens, neurotoxins, endocrine disruptors, and mutagens. Once toxic fracking fluid is unleashed into the ecosystem, there is no containing it. It can leach into community wells, resulting in noxious water and more. We have seen the ill effects of fracking in Dimmock, Pennsylvania, where families have suffered. Toxic fluids travel downstream, and they, when they evaporate, they fall back down to earth as acid rain. While cleanup efforts are a victory for clean waterways, clearly, this issue has not gone away. Add the stress of fracking to this already delicate watershed is dangerous and irresponsible. We are fooling ourselves and cheating future generations if we buy into the notion that natural gas development can be safe.
Hi, my name is Nadia Steiner. I'm the Marcellus representative for Earthworks Oil and Gas Accountability Project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for taking on the monumental task of regulating gas drilling in the Delaware River Basin. For over 20 years, Earthworks has documented the damage that's caused by extractive industries and assisted landowners and communities who unfortunately often come to us after the damage has been done and who can't believe that their health, water, and land has been compromised by an industry that they welcomed with open arms. Industry tends to move from county to county and state to state, hoping that people aren't paying attention to what's happening elsewhere and that the very justified economic vulnerability that people feel will cloud their vision about what's about to happen. I want to point out that health, safety, and clean water are everyone's concern, and everyone should care about whether the DRBC is doing all it can to uphold its mandate to do no harm. I'd like, you're doing a fabulous job in trying to develop stronger restrictions for siting in certain areas, and other aspects are very positive steps. But despite the gas industry's clear intention to develop thousands of wells over many years, the DRBC has made no effort to assess cumulative impacts for water withdrawal and well development, and the draft regulations do not contain any plans to address accumulated environmental impacts. It's a serious concern. A second serious concern is the lack of spacing requirements, which raises the question of whether the river basin will be subject to death by a thousand cuts and become an industrial zone because the DRBC did not take the time to develop, to develop well spacing requirements. I'd also like to express the concern that the DRBC has chosen to rely on state regulations for critical aspects such as well casings, setbacks, and safeties. But the commission's member states have yet to update their regulations to deal with modern industrial gas development, which is not your grandfather's drilling, despite what people may think. You don't slip under a low bar. You have the opportunity to set the bar higher, and please do. Thank you.
I'm Harry Hillier from Oregon Township, and I would like to address what appears to be the most feared of the proposed rules in the DRBC draft regulations. That is the 500-foot setback for a well pad from a water body and the 20% grade restriction. I have heard that this will make 97% of the land unavailable for a well pad, but there are provisions for variances when it can be done safely, and isn't that the point? With today's highly touted technology, drillers will still be able to access 90% or more of the gas. It will just require that pads be sited and built strategically rather than simply based on ease of access and construction. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the actual water belongs to all the citizens. Just because the water touches your property does not give you the right to place it at an undue risk, rather, it requires you to use all reasonable means to protect that water. Humans are fallible, and equipment fails, and there will be the occasional spill. If a spill enters a stream, river, or lake, it will cause serious long-term damage to wildlife, tourism, and our quality of life. The fear is that if we place extra regulations on gas drilling, the companies will go away and will not, we will not see any money or jobs. I sincerely doubt this will happen, but gas drilling companies want us to believe it. This is why our legislature, legislature, has not addressed many of the meaningful regulations regarding the environment and gas drilling. The DEP should be in charge of the regulation of drilling, but they can only enforce the laws that the legislature has in place. DEP cannot enact their own laws. Fortunately, the DRBC has taken its charge as protector of all the waters in the basin seriously. The proposal cedes control of most issues that the state has already addressed and focuses on problems where the state has not adequately protected us. A lot of careful thought and consideration has gone into this draft report, and they've tried to balance the need to protect with economic issues at hand. I'm not an environmental activist. I'm a resident who wishes to see the gas industry be successful in Wayne County, but not at the expense of things I love about the place I live. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I'm Fred Deal, resident of Wayne County, lifetime resident of Wayne County, also owner of Blue Stone Environmental. As a small business owner, I look for Marcellus shale and natural gas as a great economic development for the area. Currently, the world is experiencing economic unrest with the rising cost of oil on a daily basis. The Marcellus shale provides an economic boom to the industry in the area to allow businesses to sustain development over a lengthy period of time. How can the DRBC take regulatory power over states' laws and regulatory agencies that have been in place for years? How can DRBC tell a landowner what they can and cannot do with their property? If the states are to implement Section 7.5 as suggested by these regulations, they're unnecessary because very few items are not already regulated by the states. Section 7.5 serves to no evidence that well pads may have, may have a substantial impact on the water resources of the basin. How can this be if the amount of disturbance is limited to a mere five to six acres out of a 1,280-acre production unit? How can this be when both states already impose some of the toughest domar management regulations in the nation? How can this be when our forested lands are already steadily growing over the last half-century? We all feel good about driving on the, driving by the windmills into Wayne County, but they cause spills too. Do you know that they have over 200 gallons of oil in each one and can be spilled? The windmills provide not enough substantial energy. Natural gas is the way to go. We all need clean air and water, but we also need fuel, and everyone knows, including the DRBC, will not find a cleaner burning fuel than Wayne County's natural gas. Thank you for your time.
My name is Tanis Kowalczuk. I'm a resident in Damascus, Pennsylvania, and I work in Sullivan County, New York. The DRBC draft gas drilling regulations place no restriction on the chemicals used in the hydraulic fracturing process. Considering the DRBC's legal mandate to protect the water quality throughout the entire basin, this position is nonsensical. The regulations do not require that chemicals be disclosed to the DRBC, but that information...oh, I'm sorry, the regulations do require that the chemicals be disclosed to the DRBC, but that information is not public. Proprietary formulas that reportedly need to be protected to ensure corporate profit do not square up with the need to protect public health and the health of the watershed. If the commission were ready and willing to fulfill its role as defined in the compact, it would regulate the use of chemicals in fracking regardless of federal exemptions to the Safe Water Drinking Act. And concerning the wastewater, the draft regulations require that wastewater be treated in approved facilities. Treatment standards are too weak to ensure safe releases of this polluted wastewater. The shipping of such high volumes of polluted water is in itself risky. Furthermore, shipment of wastewater out of the basin to an approved facility is against the DRBC's own planning framework wherein one of your stated principles is to, quote, "avoid shifting pollution from one medium to another or adversely impacting other locations." Therefore, the cumulative impact of wastewater releases in other watersheds should be considered in the regulation of creating those wastewater through fracking in our watershed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Kenyon. I'm the president of Wayne County, and I would like to point out that the study by Jeanette M. Barth, president of JM Barth Associates, has, she has a 15-page report called Unanswered Questions About the Economic Impact of Gas Drilling in the Marcellus Shale. It says, on average, historically, gas companies, 3,000 jobs per year historically produced, and Walmart in one year will produce 48,777. So, and then, there's another website, it's called YourLawyer.com, and you go under Water Contamination for, From Hydraulic Fracking: Lawyers and Attorney Lawsuit, where they're currently working on cases where people's water has been contaminated in Colorado, Pennsylvania, Wyoming, Texas, and there's more. And it shows that the problems endemic with the water was because of the failure of the cement well casings, around 20 of the wells. So they're obviously not being regulated good enough. And I think there's many other options out there. I don't think natural gas is our last option. There's solar, there's wind. People, farmers can actually get grants to plant switchgrass, which can operate steam-powered generators, which has zero carbon impact, and that's about it. There's other options out there, and thanks for your time.
My name's Jackie DeSau. I'm from Wayne County. I'd like to start off with what's the point of having regulations if you don't enforce them? You leave it up to individual states and the industry. I think that leads to disaster, especially when PA Governor Corbett is ready to bulldoze 800 acres of our state land, which is supposed to stay untouched for future generations, and put up a forest of gas rigs, leaving individual states...yes, I said that, okay. Prevention, hold on here, no prevention regulations will, oh, wait, let's skip that. Insurance doesn't even cover one-fourth of the cost of contamination and other problems that you have. So I think your insurance is a bunch of malarkey, because, I mean, if it costs three times what you're asking them to cover, then they're not even going to clean up their mess, which is almost guaranteed that they're going to have. So I think you need stricter regulations. I think you should keep the moratorium on gas drilling in this area, and hopefully, it can spread throughout the rest of the world before we become, we deplete ourselves of all of our natural resources. And then I want to leave you with something I've been researching a lot. This is a definition that hits pretty close to home with the gas industry. It's involuntary manslaughter. It's taking a chance when knowing the risks. Now, I know that contamination of the water is, and people getting cancer and all these other horrible diseases from it, it's a slow death. It's not an immediate death. It's a slow death, but yet, it is still a death. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Yaman. I've been a resident of the Upper Delaware River region, along, actually, along the river for over 25 years. I'm 86 years old and have been working toward clean water for over half of my life. I've known many great rivers, the Potomac, the Monocacy, the Shenandoah, and the Susquehanna, but none of them could compare with the clear sparkling waters here in the Upper Delaware River. It was here that I understood fully the goal of the 1972 Clean Water Act, fishable, swimmable waters. I believe that in our haste to harvest the wealth of methane gas found in the Marcellus Shale, we must not allow the special protection waters of the Upper Delaware National Scenic and Recreational River to become degraded. I wonder now if exploitation of the Marcellus play will be its undoing. It must, we must not let that happen. It is these special protection waters that I'm most concerned about, both the water withdrawn and consumed in drilling and fracking, but especially the fate of the wastewater. I believe that all activity associated with gas extraction in the floodplain and within the Upper Delaware Scenic River boundaries should be prohibited. The draft rules do not place any restrictions on the chemicals that drillers can use to drill in hydraulically fractured gas wells. Considering the hundreds of dangerous chemicals that are used, many of them carcinogenic and hazardous, the fact that diesel fuel, a toxic substance, is being used in some areas to stimulate gas extraction, the DRBC's hands-off approach to the central aspect, which they could rightfully regulate, is irresponsible. The draft rules do not prescribe...thank you very much.
Ms. Collier, thank you for your forbearance. Although only a 28-year resident of Holmesdale, heed my concern about your commission's proposed regulations. As written, I believe Article 7 is premature and inadequate. A recently completed EPA comprehensive study on the impact of hydraulic fracking on groundwater quality is now undergoing scientific review. This study must be taken into consideration before you promulgate your rules. With its completion by the end of next year, best practices for regulation of hydro fracking may then be able to be written based on the best scientific foundation. Therefore, I believe that authorization for more test wells and hydro fracking in the river basin should not be allowed for one year now and should be laid for a minimum of one year with this important information, when this important information can be integrated into Article 7. I believe the only ethical way to proceed for your institution and its established mission is with maximum caution and regulation revised and based on the best scientific evidence available. The gas can wait.
I'm the last, so I'll try to make it different. Among other things, I sell wild lakes or ramps from my property to restaurants in New York City, so there are renewable, high-value resources already here, and there are many more that could be harvested. One of the things I do is I maintain a map of all the DEP permits for gas drilling and erosion and sediment control in Wayne County. So I'm pretty familiar with all the sites that are currently, that are currently applied for permits. And when I read 7.5(c), the Natural Gas Development Plan section, I was pretty interested because what I've seen in the permitting process is that all of the applicants are not large, experienced petroleum organizations. There are a lot of individuals or wildcatters without resources, expertise, wherewithal, or any other track record, and probably, if you looked at it, they may have other issues who can get a permit in this state. And unless there, there is a way to ensure that the people that are drilling actually know what they're doing, that anyone could get a permit. So when I read it, I said, okay, here's a, here's a chance that somebody's got to prove the overall impact of what they're doing, and I understand that and I think it's good. However, it's limited to people with more than five pads and/or more than 3,000 acres. The wildcatters exemption, which is what I call it, are the people that don't have that, and those are exactly the people that don't have the expertise. So the other point that's related to that is 7.5(e), the approval by rule. When I first read this section, I said approval by rule for the natural gas development plans makes a lot of sense, but then I saw all of the exceptions. So I don't think there should be exceptions for approval by rule.
Okay, my name is Tim Kenyon. I'm from Equinock. I have a small Blue Stone quarry, and I wanted to comment on the Clean Water Act. Now, I have to abide by that, and the DEP came to me a few years back, and they wanted to fine me $10,000 for red shale and water. And at the same time, they drilled a Tepa well across me, and they exempted them from the Clean Water Act. Now, I just have a Blue Stone quarry. I don't use any poison. I don't use any poison, and I have to abide by it. And another comment on the people who say it's their land, they can do what they want. Well, they can, but if what leaks on their land comes onto my land and poison me, there's going to, I'm going to have to sue them. And if they harm my children or anything, that is manslaughter. When you know the, when you know people are going to get hurt and you do it anyway, that is manslaughter. That's all I got.
I'm Joe Catarina, and I used to work for the Army Corps of Engineers in 1976 on the Tox Island Dam project, and I can appreciate the importance of the DRBC. And I think it's the duty of the DRBC to hold the line and implement whatever they think is necessary to protect the water resource of the Delaware River. However, there's going to be an economic impact upon the residents of Wayne County in this case, but I would say the greater missing link is that I don't understand why the river basins are pretty knowledgeable by the different river basin Army Corps of Engineers, like the Susquehanna River Basin and the Delaware River Basin. And I think that these organizations would be best suited to implement and to study each river basin. Now, a lot of people studied or said that the Susquehanna River Basin is not as restricted as the Delaware River Basin, but then there's not 15 million people drinking that water and there isn't in the Delaware River Basin. And I think that the DRBC is in place, and I think they should use the Army Corps of Engineers for study, research, and implementation of whatever plans you come up with, and they should be in charge of their river basins. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.